2020. Uh, to start off this meeting, I'm going to read a little bit of information on the meeting format. This meeting is, uh, will be conducted pursuant to the provisions of the Governor's Executive Order N dash twenty-five dash twenty and N dash thirty-nine dash twenty, which suspends certain requirements of the Brown Act and pursuant to the order of the Health Officer of San Mateo County dated June fourth, two thousand and twenty, as this meeting is necessary so that the city can conduct necessary business and is permitted under the orders as an essential governmental function. This meeting is not physically open to the public. Uh, City Council members and staff essential to this meeting will be video and teleconferencing into the meeting, and there will be no physical location open to the public. The public can observe the part and participate in the meeting while sheltering at home via the Zoom link provided in the agenda or by phone to the dial-in number and webinar ID provided in the agenda. You can find that on Agenda on, uh, the City of Pacifica's website. The meeting may also be observed, uh, on local TV channel twenty-six or online at www dot city of pacifica dot org backslash live stream. Okay, so for public comments, everyone, this is very important. This meeting, live verbal public comments, this is a new format, may be made through the, uh, participation by Zoom. That's what we are all using right now. For the public participating by computer or smartphone using the Zoom link, use the raise hand button to indicate that you wish to speak on the agenda item during oral communications. And when I call upon the agenda item, okay? So you will use that raise hand function, which it should be right next to, uh, at the bottom of the panel on the right-hand side, there's a raise hand button. Click on that when the agenda item comes up and if you want to talk to that agenda item. Okay, so, uh, for those who are participating by phone only, use the star nine, asterix nine, to raise your hand and request to speak when you hear the agenda item being called, okay? Somebody's gonna be monitoring that and they will see either your name or your phone number, so you will need to know the last four digits of your phone number. The city clerk is gonna call upon the speakers at the appropriate time and unmute you to talk after, uh, by calling you by screen name or the last digits of your phone number. So this could really delay our meeting, so please know the last four digits of your phone number if you don't know your name. Uh, you will then be prompted to speak and allow up to three minutes depending on how many hands we have raised. Think tonight, we're gonna try to limit it to two minutes this evening, uh, just given the amount of comments that we have received. Oh, I, I, I believe I'm getting some head shakes here from other council members. Okay, great. Um, and, uh, okay, so please clearly state your full name for the record at the start of the public comment so we can make sure that it's documented correctly. Written and email public comments will not be read during the meeting. This is different from last week, okay? Or two weeks ago. Written public comments received by four P M. today will be made part of the written record and will be provided to City Council prior to the meeting. We've already received them. And posted to the city's website on City Council Agenda's webpage for public reference. Emails will not be monitored for public comment during the meeting, how they were last time, okay? So if you wish to make a public comment during the meeting and not have a submitted and have not submitted a comment in writing by four P M. today, please participate via the Zoom act, the Zoom access information in the agenda, okay? Or by phone and raise your hand when your agenda item comes up. If your item is not, if there's no item on the agenda, you just want to talk about something that's not on the agenda, raise your hand during oral communications. That's using the raise your hand function or star nine on your phone. Okay, so I'm gonna read the rules of decorum. I'm gonna go through this pretty fast, um, so, you know, basically be, be a good human here. Uh, in order to ensure that all members of the public have an opportunity to speak, there will be a two-minute limitation on comments by the public. Uh, whoever this limitation may be reduced about the discretion of the presiding officer, which is me, and I believe we're going to limit it this evening to two minutes. Um, okay, so I'm gonna open public comment to each speaker who has indicated that they wish to provide a public comment by using the raised hand feature, and you're gonna be unmuted. Um, our city clerk is monitoring the panelist, okay, so the, it's being monitored. It, it is the policy of the City Council that all members of the public have the right to address the council, and that right includes the right to make remarks that some may find critical, unpleasant, or even offensive. However, it's important that a proper standard of behavior be maintained during these meetings and that the City Council is able to complete the public's business in a timely manner. Therefore, the public should respect the order procedures and decorum of City Council meetings. We worked really hard to make this happen so we could hear your voice and, if possible, see you. So, so we just hope that everybody can help us, um, be respectful. So please don't, um, you know, please be efficient, don't make any threats against any person, uh, or, uh, the public order. So I'm going to enforce this rule of decorum by ordering the speakers to maintain decorum and, um, take steps necessary to restore order if that were to happen. I don't have a gavel, but don't make me terminate, I, you know, and just be respectful. And also, you will be held to that time limit, so, uh, you will, you will probably see or hear, I don't want to have to cut you off, so just make sure that, uh, you're being mindful of that also. So the format, if anything happens, and for instance, we get haywire with the network and something goes wrong, the meeting may be altered, okay? Or canceled. So if that happens, something goes haywire, you can check the status of the meeting by visiting our city website, www dot city of pacifica dot org. Okay, thank you for allowing me, uh, to talk a little bit about that, and, um, I will ask for roll call.
Councilmember O'Neil.
Here.
Councilmember Beer.
Here.
Councilmember Vatterlaus.
Here.
Mayor Protem Beckmeyer.
Here.
Mayor Martin.
Here. Okay, salute to the flag led by myself. Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic.
To the Republic.
Which stands.
Which stands.
One nation.
One nation.
Under God.
Under God.
Indivisible.
Indivisible.
With liberty and justice for all. Thank you. For this evening, we are going to kick off Pride Month, uh, with a special presentation. We have a proclamation, and here to receive our proclamation is Terry Echolbarker. Thank you for being here. Terry is a representative set from San Mateo County LGBTQ Commission. Uh, so I will read this proclamation in celebration of Pride Month. Whereas the City Council of the City of Pacifica recognizes and proclaims the month of June two thousand and twenty as lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer LGBTQ Pride Month throughout the City of Pacifica. And whereas the City of Pacifica joins the County of San Mateo to observe Pride Month to honor the history of the LGBTQ liberation movement and to support the rights of all citizens to experience equality and freedom from discrimination. And whereas all human beings are born free and equal in dignity and rights, LGBTQ individuals have had immeasurable impact to the cultural, civic, and economic success of our country. And whereas the City of Pacifica is committed to supporting visibility, dignity, and equality for LGBTQ people in our diverse community. And whereas, while society at large increasingly supports LGBTQ equality, it is essential to acknowledge that the need for education and awareness remains vital to end discrimination and prejudice. And whereas this nation was founded on the principle that every individual has infinite dignity and worth, and the City of Pacifica calls upon the people of this municipality to embrace this principle and work to eliminate prejudice everywhere it exists. And whereas celebrating Pride Month influences awareness and provides support and advocacy for San Mateo County's LGBTQ community and is an opportunity to take action and engage in dialogue to strengthen alliances, build acceptance, and advance equal rights. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Pacifica hereby proclaims the month of June two thousand and twenty as Pride Month in support of the LGBTQ community and recognizes all LGBTQ residents whose influential and lasting contributions to our neighborhoods make Pacifica a vibrant community in which to live, work, and visit. Done this eighth day of June two thousand and twenty, Girdra Martin, Mayor.
Thank you very much on behalf of the LGBT Commission in San Mateo and on behalf of all the LGBTQ plus residents, friends, and family in Pacifica. It's meaningful to be seen as an important part of those who make up the diversity of our city. LGBTQ plus people come in every color. And on this fiftieth anniversary of Pride celebrations, we remember a long history of those who've rallied for their rights and still fight to be seen as equally valuable and equally worthy part of our communities. Thanks again. We appreciate this, and in a moment, I'll sign out and go to my TV with the rest of the folks. Thanks for being here and, uh, for the proclamation.
Thank you, Terry.
Thank you.
Wonderful. Terry, we're gonna send that to you via mail. Okay.
Excuse me, Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Hi. So we need, we need to add an urgency item to the agenda tonight. Um, and the item relates to, uh, the city manager's declaration of an emergency order um, that relates to outdoor activities for businesses in the city related to COVID. Um, in order to add that to the agenda tonight, uh, the council's gonna need to make two findings, um, by a four-fifth vote. Um, the first finding is that there is a need to take action. Um, and the need to take action tonight is that on Friday, the manager did, um, issue an emergency order that allows temporary outdoor activities for certain businesses. Um, the second finding that needs to be made is that there is a need to take action prior to the next regularly scheduled meeting. And there is because this emergency order needs to be ratified by the council um, at the soonest practicable time, um, and waiting two weeks until the next regular agenda, um, would not be reasonable. So if I could get a motion from a member of the council to add this to the agenda for purposes of making those findings, um, you can, it can be done in one motion. Um, and it would just need to be seconded and then approved by a four-fifth vote.
Okay, Councilmember Vatterlaus?
I move that we, um, add an emergency ordinance to our agenda tonight relating to outdoor, uh, dining.
And that we have made the findings that there is an immediate need to take action and that need to take action came to the attention of the staff pro, post posting of the agenda.
Oh, exactly what she said.
Mm-hmm, and, uh, Councilmember O'Neil?
Second.
Okay, so, uh, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember O'Neil.
Yes.
Councilmember Beer.
Yes.
Councilmember Vatterlaus?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Beckmeyer?
Yes.
Mayor Martin.
Yes.
And that, uh, passes by a vote, unanimous vote of five to zero.
And so, Madam Mayor, I believe we're gonna want to add this as item number seventeen to the agenda, if that's okay with the council?
Yes.
Yep, I think we have consensus. I see a bunch of head shaking.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, with that, we will move on to the consent calendar. I have to pull item three for a comment, um, from myself. Anyone else? And then I'll ask if there are public comments. I see a couple of hands raised.
Mayor Martin, um, I do see two hands, uh, raised by the public. Um, I would just want to check in with them to see if this is relating to the, um, uh, consent calendar.
Still thing?
Yeah, you're good.
Great, okay, so do we check in with Jeff Guye?
Okay, so, um,
Could we check in with Jeff Guye?
Jeff, uh, Jeff Guye, um, I'm going to unmute so that he can confirm that his comment relates to the consent calendar.
My comment relates to just open opinion, open whatever.
Okay.
Public opinion, thank you.
Okay, can you lower your hand and then, um, raise it again, um, when the mayor calls for oral communications?
Done.
Thank you. Um, I'm checking in with, uh, Dennis Ravel.
Yes, this is Dennis, uh, it's on item three on the consent calendar.
Okay.
Okay, so then if no one else wants to pull any items, we will pull item three. And, uh, I'll, uh, entertain a motion for the remaining consent items.
I move that we approve the consent calendar minus item three.
Second.
Okay.
I second.
So moved by Councilmember O'Neil, seconded by Councilmember Vatterlaus.
Okay, and I'll do the roll call vote. Uh, Councilmember O'Neil, this is for, uh, consent calendar minus item number three.
Yes.
Councilmember Beer.
Yes.
Councilmember Vatterlaus.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Beckmeyer.
Yes.
Mayor Martin.
Yes.
And the consent calendar minus item three, uh, is approved by a unanimous, unanimous vote of five to zero.
Okay, great, so item number three, uh, we can open it to Dennis Ravel?
Okay, I'm unmuting, uh, Dennis Ravel to make his public comment on item number three.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, council members. Thank you for this opportunity, and I will keep my comments brief. Basically, as I indicated to you in my email of July, excuse me, June fifth, uh, I'm requesting a modest, modest amendment to one of the forms in the agenda packet. The reason for this modification is to, uh, reflect that these are fireworks stands run by volunteers, not a brick-and-mortar retailer with employees. Uh, absent these modifications, the protocol, uh, could easily be misunderstood by both the volunteers and the stand and customers alike. And, uh, it does nothing to change the substantive impact of the form. And I submitted the, uh, modified form to both, uh, the police chief and city manager in advance of the, uh, email which I sent you on June fifth. Thank you.
Okay, does anyone have anything they'd like to say?
Is, is it okay for us to be able to talk about that now or to talk about the, the public comment?
And, uh, Yeah, we can talk about it amongst ourselves. I will close public comment. But we can talk about it amongst ourselves if we'd like.
Um, my, my comment is, is the city manager, police chief, and maybe the city attorney, okay with the amendments Mr. Ravel has requesting?
Good evening, uh, I don't know, Mayor and council members, this is Dan Stadler, your chief of police. You know, looking over the, um, the differences in the two, um, it seemed that, uh, you know, Mr. Ravel's suggestion, uh, is not an unreasonable suggestion. Um, and I will let the city manager speak to this, but I think the, the, the purpose of using the social distancing protocol, uh, that we selected for this was because this was what was, uh, produced as a result of the county order. Um, and looking at it, you know, um, there are clearly, in each area that says, check all that apply. Um, it's easy for us to go over, our staff to go over with the fireworks vendors or the, the nonprofit groups, which one applied to them and which ones don't. And as you know, I meet with all the vendors prior to the, uh, the actual, uh, beginning of, of, of sales. So I would be, I would be covering all that and what their expectations were.
So in a nutshell, you're okay with his proposed amendments?
Yeah, I, I don't have any, any objections to it, no.
Okay. Mr. Woodhouse?
And, and I'll add that, um, I, I think the, uh, spirit of the health protection that we're trying to achieve in the, in the sales at the booths uh, is what's critical, and between now and the end of the month, there could be, you know, additional guidelines that, that change. And really, the critical thing here is our work, uh, through the police department with all of the nonprofit groups and, and, uh, the, the companies about what is gonna be health-protected there. So, um, if the chief, uh, is comfortable with, uh, the details of the submittal, that works. And we'll just ensure that they're being followed.
Thank you.
Okay, and, uh, my comment is that I voted no for this, uh, two weeks ago, so I will also be voting no again this week.
Um, yeah, I think I'll go ahead and make a comment about it too because, um, I, I obviously haven't been here and I didn't hear a whole lot, um, about, um, a whole lot of discussion about, you know, having people gather and the health and safety around those issues. So I do have some concerns around that, so I will, um, I just wanted to let people know that I do have some concerns about that part.
Okay, so I will make a motion that we approve item number three on the consent calendar.
Okay, can we have a second? Councilmember? Okay, we have a roll call vote. That was motioned by Councilmember O'Neil and seconded by Vatterlaus.
Councilmember O'Neil.
Yes.
Councilmember Beer.
No.
Councilmember Vatterlaus?
Yes.
Um, Mayor Protem Beckmeyer?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
No.
And that, uh, motion passes, uh, by a vote of three in favor and two opposed.
Okay, great, uh, we will move on then. Uh, uh, Clerk Coffee, are the attendees' video turned on or off?
The public attendees' videos are turned off. They will be participating by audio only tonight.
Okay, I just wanted to confirm, um, I had a couple notes, just wondering if folks were able to see themselves. So, great. Um, we will move on to oral communications, and, uh, I see a few hands raised. I see them all coming in. And, uh, it looked like, um, FDA had his hand raised. And, um, Coffee Clerk, do you want me to call out or will you, uh, and, um, and Elizabeth be running the show here?
I believe Deputy City Clerk Elizabeth Brooks is available. She will be calling on the, uh, public attendees for public comment.
Okay, great, and I just want to confirm with the nod of heads from other council members, given the amount of hands that I see raised here, which are many, uh, we're okay with two minutes, uh, for oral communication? Yes? Okay, so you will raise your hand, you will be called on by name, and, um, if you're dialing in by phone, you can hit star nine, that's asterix nine, to raise your hand. You will need to know the last four digits of your phone number. We will ca, we will call that out if we don't see your name pop up. Uh, on the screen, you are seeing the amount of time that you have left, and we will cut you off if you go over. So we just appreciate you paying attention to that. Okay, I think we're ready for orals.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and honorable council members. It's Elizabeth Brooks, your deputy city clerk. First, we'll be hearing from Jeff Guye. If he's ready, I'm going to unmute him now. Please state your name for the record.
So he still looks to be on mute, sir Elizabeth?
Yeah, I've unmuted him, but it's not going through for some reason.
Can you hear me now?
Just unmuted.
Okay, uh, my name is Jeff Guye. Uh, I guess my time started. Uh, thank you, City Council. I'm very pleased that the city is moving forward on replacing and extending the seawall to close the southern gap. However, I'm shocked to learn that the engineering firm G H D is subcontracting Environmental Science Associates, E S A, to perform significant portions of this one point five million dollar project. E S A provided faulty cost benefits analysis and sea level rise predictive maps for the proposed local coastal plan. As you know, a lot of citizens raised issues with that, and, uh, as such, the city attorney and the city council had to add disclaimers to the L U, L C L U P, saying that their data could not be used for any disclaimers to the L U L C L U P saying that their data could not be used for any future purpose, and the maps could not be used for any future future purpose. Even so, we see that GHD has contracted ESA to provide the same information for the seawall engineering study to the tune of 146,500 dollars. These tasks include flood risk assessment and the adaptation plan and environmental conditions. It is well known that ESA is biased against seawalls and favors managed retreat. I encourage the city council to insist that GHD not use ESA in any way for this project. City Council and Planning Commission must ensure that ESA or anyone else is not allowed to use the previous errant data in any way. Allowing them to do so would be a violation of the disclaimer adopted by the city, and it would also be a case of double dipping where ESA would be paid twice for the same work. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm now going to call on Bianca Valenti. Your time will begin when you begin speaking.
Hello, my name is Bianca Valenti, and I'm a professional surfer and a volunteer for Brown Girl Surf and City Surf Project. And I just wanted to come advocate for these two amazing, incredible programs. Um, as somebody who's dreamt of being a professional surfer and having access to all the resources that men have had all my life, um, and then volunteering with these organizations and seeing the transformative experience that the kids have when they get to participate. Um, these are just two programs that are truly heartening, and I I can't even tell you like the powerful work that they're doing. It's really more like a community service. And so um in my mind, the permitting process and, you know, putting putting these folks alongside uh for-profit surf camps, you know, I I think that that Brown Girl Surf and City Surf Project should have a special division because the these are the types of people who I want to have access to the beach and who I want to be part of our community to diversify and strengthen and enhance our communities. And I was so impressed by the show up, the way Pacifica showed up and paddled out to honor the life of George Floyd and and stand against police brutality. And I think that giving access to these communities to the beaches of Pacifica would be a wonderful way to continue giving service, providing service to these communities that are in need and asking for support right now. So, thank you.
Thank you, Bianca.
Next, we'll hear from username Soul Soul. Could you please state your name for the record? Your time will begin when you begin speaking.
Good evening, my name is uh Soul. I go by Soul. And I'm a resident here in Pacifica, and um I just want to wish everybody uh all the honorable members of the Pacific City Council, and thank you for all your your hard work. Um, I'm here to uh be in support of nonprofits like the City Surf Project and Brown Girl Surf and creating more access um for surfing for communities of color. And uh I'm a also a surf photographer and um a filmmaker, and I highlight uh the inequalities in surf culture. And I was really frustrated to find out that the current permitting system um isn't allowing for more access for nonprofit groups like Brown Girl Surf and City Surf Projects. And so um this has serious implications for racial equal equity and beach access in Pacifica State Beach. And these groups serve mostly Black and Brown communities who, for reasons of structural racism in our society, have faced greater barriers to accessing the beach and the sport of surfing. So I strongly support taking measures to make Pacifica's beach beaches more equitable. Uh, this includes reforming the permitting system so that nonprofit groups can apply for these permits to operate regular surf programming and that the racial equity lens is considered when considering measures that impact beach access. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Soul.
Next, we'll hear from Barbara Redfield. If you please could state your name for the record, and your time will begin when you begin speaking. I'm running into the unmute issue again.
Barbara Redfield?
There we go.
Ready to go. First of all, it's Chris Redfield. Thank you. I want to I want to say I'm very pleased to see a fifth member on the council tonight. Welcome back. Uh, I want to commend uh not only Pacifica Police Department, but all law enforcement for showing up. You never know what the next response call may be. Take that call no matter what. You're you have an amazing commitment to public safety and civil order. Your literal life is on the line just for taking the oath. Every officer chose this endeavor. Ninety-nine percent of do that will do this with honor. Good luck finding that level of commitment in a career outside of public safety. I and the vast majority have your back. I will support the thin blue line at every turn, as will everyone with common sense. I must say, I find with great humor those that have no clue what they're looking at or how to research a city budget and only general guidelines. In my years, I have had many encounters with not only PPD but other agencies. My youth, ignorance, and arrogance were a significant factor in many of those encounters. Some of those were undeserved. Most were my own doing. I have I've had justified grievance, but I'll say walk that thin blue line. And you I'm sorry, I missed I missed a line in there. It's a thin blue line. Pacifica will hold that line. Thank you, Blue.
Thank you, Chris.
Next, we'll hear from Suzanne Moore. If you could state your name for the record, and your time will begin when you begin speaking.
Suzanne Moore. Pacifica is generous and hardworking. The times require it. Hardship has a way of reminding us what really is most important: home, family, community. Our Pacifica homeless face increased hardship since the risk for COVID-19 exposure is five times greater than that of the general population. We need to remind ourselves who Pacifica's homeless are. According to the county survey conducted fall of 2019, Pacifica's the hickory land housed have strong ties to our community. Many were previously housed here or have family here. Many are working poor, many are over age fifty, and the majority desire permanent housing. The parking permit pilot drafted by the Pacifica Resource Center in our faith community is a solution which increases safety for our entire community by assisting our homeless to stable housing. The pilot program vets participants, utilizes case management to address barriers to housing, and provides life services like hygiene, food, and waste disposal. The program reduces the number of homeless in the best way possible by providing a pathway to housing. No money will be required from Pacifica's general fund. The pilot suggests the city provide in-kind services, the permitting process already planned, and suitable parking slots for the pilot. We are in urgent need of a safe parking pilot. A second wave of COVID-19 is expected in the fall. This city and this council can choose to give this pilot a one-year trial to evaluate its impact and success. There is every indication this pilot will save lives. Congresswoman Jackie Speer challenged our community and said, "The right thing to do is often the hard thing to do." We have a solution, and we need your support. Support the PRC's Parking Permit Pilot and rapidly take steps to enact. Thank you, and welcome back, Mary.
Thank you, Suzanne.
Next, we'll hear from Tiger Big Stick. If you could please state your name for the record.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. I'm Tiger Jazz trolls, Big Stick. Um, welcome back, Councilwoman Beer. First of all, um, first I wanted to join in so I could see what this was like and participate, and um initially I just want to offer a lot of gratitude. So thank you for making this happen so that the community can bring their voice in real time to your ears in real time. Um, this will have an effect not just here in the council, but in other departments, as you well know, and at the end of the day, having everybody given the opportunity to speak, I feel is foundational for our community, and I am deeply grateful for that. Um, I'm also grateful how the pandemic has been handled um in terms of our police force enforcing on the one hand, and on the other hand, understanding that people are people. So I'm grateful um because when we began, "Don't panic" was quick to my lips, and I'm also grateful that as a community, we've come to a place where we are no longer panicking, and we're rising to the occasion. In terms of other recent news, um, I want to say thank you to the chief of police for immediately calling out that criminal actions were conducted in the murder of George Floyd. I want to thank the city manager for also um calling out by name a homicide when he sees one. Um, and I am grateful that this is a a community in which we have a police department which um strives to be a beacon of light uh in terms of how other police departments may um act when it comes to serving community rather than merely um enforcing based on, I'm not quite sure what, but the human touch that is here uh in our community, I believe to be something that um is a shining beacon, and I hope others see clearly. So thank you for being here tonight, and thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Tiger.
We'll now hear from Gloria Stoffen. Please state your name for the record, and your time will begin when you begin speaking.
Am I, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, Gloria Stoffen, thank you for this opportunity to speak to you. I um uh, this is really different, and my heart is beating. It's really kind of strange. Um, I just wanted to uh have the city council not forget that um we're still in this pandemic, and we have several RV or motorhome housed in the city of Pacifica, and they're at great risk. It's it's really not, it breaks my heart to see them out there. Um, I really hope that you can consider and support the Pacifica Resource Center's draft of uh the Safe Parking Permit Pilot Program. This would really help um in terms of giving us some some goal and some structure. The Resource Center is the way to go. Thank you very much, and welcome back, Mary. Thank you.
Thank you, Gloria.
We'll now hear from Anita Reese. You could state your name for the record.
Hello, this is Anita Reese. I'm with the Pacifica Resource Center, and I want to thank the city and the community for your support while we've continued to adapt in response to COVID and its impact on Pacifica residents. Our can our office continues to be open to the community Monday and Tuesday mornings, Wednesday afternoons until seven, Thursday afternoons, and Friday nine to one. Our core services during our shelter-in-place are groceries, housing assistance, and services for unhoused families and individuals. The rental of the refrigerated container ends this week, so we've adjusted our grocery distribution to a hybrid delivery and drive-through program. Drive-through distributions will be on Wednesdays in the parking lot at the American Legion Hall at 555 Yule. They begin at 2:30. Folks who are signed up in advance will have a scheduled distribution time. Any others who need groceries that haven't already signed up can arrive at 3:30 and will provide groceries as quickly as possible. The county also extended the moratorium on evictions through June 30th. Rents will be due as usual beginning on July 1st. If anyone needs help paying past due rent or July rent, please have contact PRC by phone, email, or via our website. We have an online application to make it easier to apply and collect the most important documents to process applications. Showers continue to be available for unhoused individuals and families by appointment. Thanks to several volunteers, we've been able to offer even more showers on a weekly basis, and anyone who's unhoused can come to Pacifica Resource Center for help. We're also recruiting for three new staff members, two outreach specialists for our unhoused-on-the-coast outreach work, and one case manager. Job announcements can be found on indeed.com. Lastly, the deadline to complete the census has been extended. You can complete the census online at my2020census.gov or by phone at 844-330-2020. Even though San Mateo County has the highest response rate in California and Pacifica has the fourth highest response rate in San Mateo County, we need everyone to be counted. Thank you.
Thanks, Anita.
We'll now hear from Ginger Cuevas. Please state your name for the record.
Hi, good evening. My name is Ginger Cuevas. Hello, good evening, city council members. Thank you for having us here tonight. I'm here uh to voice my support for the proposed changes to the permitting process so that it's broadened to um access to permits to nonprofits such as Brown Girl Surf, City Surf Project, Boys and Girls Club, et cetera. Um, I myself have been a longtime Brown Girl Surf volunteer, as well as a participant in Surf Sister Saturdays. And surfing has definitely uh changed my life in many ways, and this program is providing access to the beach in ways that for-profit surf camps, surf um schools wouldn't be able to. Um, it the experience is definitely different with Brown Girl Surf. We are um constantly trying to make sure that the program is very safe for um all levels of experience, and at a time like this where beach access is crucial to Black and Brown communities, which are the communities that Brown Girl Surf and other um nonprofits are servicing, we definitely feel it's crucial for a time like this to provide this kind of access so that we can speed up the healing process through um oh through the ocean and through surfing. Another thing is, you know, we're constantly um educating on the environmental component, so people who go to the beach with us uh leave more educated, leave happier, and are able to have a different sense of respect in their communities when they go back, and they treat their neighborhoods differently um and everything. So I just wanted to voice my support for that, and thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you, Ginger.
We'll now hear from Rahim Walker. If you could state your name for the record?
Hi, my name is Rahim Walker. Good evening, everyone. Uh, I am here in support of Brown Girl Surf and City Surf Project. I commend the work that they do in the community. I is a longtime resident of Pacifica. I've been here for about ten years. Um, I've been surfing for about twenty years. I'm one of the only Black surfers typically in the lineup. Uh, and I know the power of change that surfing can bring the life of a young individual, and the joy that you see on the face of someone who's at the beach playing. I don't think it's uh right for us to deny access. And so I'm here in full support of equal access because the work that these folks are doing is meaningful, and we have a responsibility to uphold their ability to enjoy the same type of access and the same type of experiences as other folks who are within our community as well. I do not buy into the argument that uh crowding at the beach is a reason to deny access because if we cared about crowding, we would have lifeguard stands and we would have lifeguards there to protect folks. Um, there are other avenues and ways that we can ensure that we have equal access. I have a daughter who's eight and a half years old. She loves the ocean. It's one of the most beautiful things that I share in our experience. She often is the only uh child of color who is at the beach. I would love for her to spend more time with the great folks of Brown Girls Surf, of City Surf Project, getting to know them. I think it's our duty as a people to not let the geographic kind of location of Pacifica, the proximity to San Francisco, deny what these great, amazing folks are doing because they're trying to change lives, and that's why we're here um living in the community, and that's why you're elected officials. It's your duty, and it's our responsibility. It's your duty and it's our responsibility to provide that access. Thank you.
Thank you, Rahim.
We'll now hear from Myra Manikam Shirley. Please state your name for the record.
Hi, my name is Myra Manikam Shirley, and I am the Executive Director and Co-Founder of Brown Girl Surf. Our program serves primarily, and thank you so much for giving me the time to speak tonight. Our program serves primarily girls and women of color who didn't realize that surfing was something they could do until they learned about Brown Girl Surf. It's not just that surfing costs money and that most communities of color have been impacted by decades of redlining, housing discrimination, and economic injustice, which means that most of us don't live right next to the beach. It's also that historically, we have not seen folks who look like us surfing. While surf culture is known for its stoke, it's also known for localism and the idea that some people who have gotten there first deserve to be there more than others. Many of our participants don't feel like they can just sign up for a regular surf lesson at a for-profit surf school and tell us that Brown Girl Surf is the first place where they felt that they could be seen and that they felt that they could be supported by women instructors who look like them and share their life experiences. When we started doing our surf programming, we were quickly told that we could not be at Pacifica without a permit. When I called to find out about getting a permit, I learned that there was no process and there was no way to get a permit. So, we put our programming at Half Moon Bay, which is an extra 20-minute drive on a really good day. The biggest piece of feedback we get from our participants is that we don't spend enough time in the water. There's only so much time between breakfast and lunch. And if we could surf at Pacifica, we could double the time that our participants get to spend in the water. I don't want Brown Girl Surf to have to sneak in or hide at the beach, and I hope that we can change the permitting system so that we too can have a place of belonging at Pacifica State Beach at Lindemar.
Thank you, Myra.
We'll now hear from Johnny Erwin. Please state your name for the record.
Hello, everyone. My name is Johnny Erwin. I am the Executive Director of City Surf Project. Thank you for this opportunity. Over the past few years, City Surf Project has actually been operating at Pacifica through an agreement with one of the surf, one of the surf permits of NorCal permits. And the response from local beachgoers has mostly been very welcoming, but sometimes it has been not. There have been folks that have taken pictures of us, counted our numbers of how many youth we had, and sent those in to the Beach Commissioner and just made, made offhand comments that have been on the borderline of harassment. And the second point that I'd like to make is that, or how in support of this permit is very necessary to legitimize our being there and also open up more equity for other organizations to be there and how important that is, that we're not going there in secrecy anymore so that all the folks at Pacifica can, can see that and be open to that. Second point I'd like to make is how beneficial the, that going to Pacifica is for our youth. I'm just going to read an excerpt from one of our youth that is a graduating senior from Mission High School. And before going surfing or before joining our program, she had never surfed before. She is an African-American, 17-year-old, again, from Mission High School in San Francisco. "As I leave school after six hours of abusing my writing hands, I look up in the sky to see it's very foggy. It doesn't seem like a pretty day to get in the water, but I wish that within the 30-minute drive down to Pacifica, the fog will clear out. When I get to the parking lot of my school, I can see the big white van, big white van, like 10 surfboards on the top, top with the big right logo on the side, City Surf Projects, City Surf Project. All students get in, and we drive down to the beach, listening to the radio station 1061, getting us in the mood. I have on the right-hand side the seat because we're driving down the Pacifica Hills. I have the best view of the ocean."
Oh, I gotta cut you off, Johnny.
Thank you.
So sorry. Thank you.
Next, we'll hear from Marion Adney. Please state your name for the record.
Hi, my name is Marion Adney. Can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Marion Adney, and I would like to thank the city council for taking your comment. I would like to ask the city council to consider and adopt the proposed revisions to the surf camp permit regulations to allow nonprofits such as Brown Girl Surf and City Surf Project to operate surf camps at Lindemar Beach. I'm a coastal resident and a Bay Area native, and I recently moved from Pacifica to Montero. One of the wonderful things about living in California is the fact that our beaches are public resources for all to enjoy. However, as we know and have heard powerfully in some comments tonight, access to beaches and ocean culture is not equal for all communities. Currently, all of the surf camps permitted in Pacifica are for-profit organizations. Not allowing nonprofit groups that serve economically and culturally diverse communities to operate surf camps perpetuates inequalities in our community. Not everyone has the same ability to come to our beaches or the resources to learn to surf on their own. As a resident of our coastal community, I feel strongly that those of us privileged to live here have a responsibility to preserve and steward these resources for all communities. In addition to that, I'm an ecologist, and environmental conservation is my profession. I'm very aware of the social, economic, and racial biases and discrimination in the world of both conservation and outdoor activity and the impact that has on our world. When groups feel excluded, they will not necessarily believe that they can or want to play a part in environmental conservation, which requires all of us. Finally, on a personal note, as a Bay Area native and resident here on the coast, I'm very sad that our community is not more racially, economically, and culturally diverse and welcoming. So, I ask you to consider these recommendations, these carting surf camp permits, as a simple and concrete step toward making our beaches inclusive. Thank you.
Thank you, Marion.
We'll now hear from Irina Alejo. Please state your name for the record.
Hi, good evening. My name is Irina Alejo. I'm an artist, an educator, and a queer Filipino surfer, a volunteer with Brown Girl Surf, and a big fan of City Surf Project. I am heartbroken to learn about the current permitting system, which inequitably prioritizes for-profit surf companies and makes it impossible for our nonprofits to apply for permits. How can we make ocean access more accessible beyond people who live by the beach and have the financial and social capital to surf and enjoy the ocean, who are mostly non-Black, non-Indigenous, and non-people of color? We all learned from this COVID-19 shelter-in-place about who is privileged to access the ocean due to proximity and resources. I wish for Brown Girl Surf and City Surf Project to help Black and Brown youth recognize the ocean is also a place of healing for them through being able to apply for permits through the reform. Growing up as a low-income inner-city youth born and raised in San Francisco, I never thought I would dedicate my life to surfing, much less access the ocean. On Saturday, I participated in a paddle-out for Black Lives Matter with Brown Girl Surf at the jetty. I learned how to help a beginner Latina teenager surfer identify peaks and make sure she doesn't get swept by the current. I'd love to be able to surf with this youth at Lindemar through our program. I strongly support taking measures to make Pacifica's beaches more equitable by reforming the, by reforming the permitting system through a racial equity lens. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Irina.
Next, we're going to hear from Olivia Van Damme. If you could state your name for the record.
Hello, my name is Olivia Van Damme. I'm here to advocate for the restructuring of the current surf camp permitting process to be expanded to nonprofits to be able to apply. I volunteered with Brown Girl Surf since 2016 and has, and worked for City Surf Project for two and a half years as a program director. As a surf coach and educator in the ways with youth of color, I have seen the ways that these organizations bring, bring Black, Brown, and youth of color in a safe way, that is accessible, where mentorship is happening, and where youth see people that look like them in the water. Our surf camps and our, our operations are prioritizing safety. We have all of our staff as leader, as lifeguard certified. We are expert surfers, and we bring expert surfers as volunteers to help support these young people to learn how to surf. If someone from the community wants to rent a surfboard from NorCal Surf Shop, and they have no experience, no coach, no private lesson, they can go ahead and do that. That is more dangerous in the lineup where inexperienced and solo people are renting surfboards and can cause collisions and damage. Our surf camps are, are prioritizing safety and doing it in an inclusive way that I've never seen happen before and that I, I think is so important. And I've worked on this access issue for the past three years, and I really am so excited and grateful that this is something that we're talking about with the city council and with the mayor. So, thank you so much for your support. I have so many countless stories of youth having amazing, beautiful, and transformative experiences in the water, and I want that to continue and for Brown girls like me to be in the water.
Thank you, Olivia.
Now, we'll hear from Camille Romani. Please state your name for the record.
Hi, my name is Camille Romani. I want to thank the council members today for creating this space where we can share our voice. My family and I moved from India to Muscle Rock area, one side Daly City, and then later a few years on the other side to Pacifica, one block over. In 1980, we went to the beach every day. And 30, 20 years ago, I started surfing at Lindemar. And I got a lot of questions about what, where, where was I from? And I would say Pacifica, and they would say, no, where are you really from? And some of that was out of genuine curiosity, but some of that made me feel like I didn't belong. Fast forward 20 years from then, I have been a volunteer for Brown Girl Surf since the beginning of its inception. And when they first said that they were going to do surf camps, I thought, oh, my God, young, Brown, and Black girls of color will share in Pacifica's beauty in the way that I've had the privilege to. But they won't feel that sense of not belonging because we will be there to introduce them to that beauty. And then, when I heard that the permits was not possible, I, it broke my heart. And so, I'm here to advocate, the council members, to really reevaluate the permitting process, to allow organizations like Brown Girl Surf, Surf, City Surf, and Boys and Girls Club to access this amazing place in a way that it is their right, it is their human right. And I really implore you to think about the stories that have been shared today and then many more that will be created if that is allowed to happen. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Camille.
Now, we'll hear from Martin Anaya. Please state your name for the record.
Hey, Marty, are you there? It looks like Marty may be having difficulty. Let's try to come back to him.
Next, we have Barbara Redfield, which I will allow to talk to find out if it's Chris again or if it's Barbara.
Elizabeth, you are correct. It is Chris. Chris Redfield. And I want to state, I, I wish to adamantly support upgrades to the solar improvement and enhancement to any and all proposals to this end. Pacifica has cards to play in regard to the economic benefits to progress on upgraded and enhanced solar output to benefit not only the ratepayers, the environment, but the very viable future of the facility. It is unimaginable that the Coastal Commission, California Coast Commission, will, will oppose this sustainable upgrade. Please support all effort to realize this benefit to the coast. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. And Chris, I think you talked twice for public comments, so.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Next time, we just only allow that once. So, we just unmuted you because we thought maybe it was Barbara. Okay, Marty, are you there?
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. I just wanted to say that Pacific Coast Television, we are currently getting ready for episode 999 of the Bruce Latimer Show. And for those people who don't know, for those people that have maybe been under a rock for the past, you know, 30 years in Pacifica, Bruce Latimer is the oldest, longest-running national show. And when I say national, it's because if you go through the entire nation, it's the oldest show that is a musical variety show. He's had everybody on there from the Jefferson Starship to, you name it, Big Brother and the Holding Company, I mean, all the local bands, everybody. And Bruce is known throughout the nation. And so, what I wanted to tell you is, he's, he's just about to drop episode 999. That is one shy of 1,000 episodes, and we are so very proud of Bruce, and we're so very proud of all of these people, all these musicians, all these people that have worked with him over the years. I just wanted to make the, the city aware of it and the city council aware of it. We don't have an ETA for when show 1,000 is going to happen, but I would love, love, love to give Bruce a proclamation because he's been doing this thing for so long and doing so many wonderful things in this community by supporting local music, by supporting some of these Bay Area musicians, and by giving a voice to so many, not just musicians, but artists all over the place. And again, this 999 show, I wish I could tell you we have it programmed, but as soon as I have a program for it, we're going to put an ad in the paper, and we're going to let everybody know that Bruce Latimer Show 999 is about to happen. And then, the next one is show 1,000, the big 1,000. So, we hope everybody will tune in. It's pacificcoast.tv, and of course, Channel 26 on Comcast Cable. Thank you so much, guys.
Great, thanks, Marty.
Next, we have a call-in from number 9733. Please state your name for the record.
Yes. Good evening. My name is Carolyn Almeo. I'm the homeowner.
Did we lose you?
I do not see her, her, that number on the attendees list any longer.
I think she would, needed to shut her TV off in the background.
She's gone now. Okay, is, should we wait a minute? We, we can come back to her if she joins again. If we have public comments, it's probably best to move on for now.
I did not see any further public comments at this time.
Okay. I don't know if we're going to be able to come back if we close public comments, so. Yes, we, we should just close public comments now. Okay. So, I see a hand phrase right now, actually, Elizabeth.
I just see we have username Will. If you could state your name for the record.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
My name's Will McCarthy. I'm just calling on behalf of City Surf Project and Brown Girl Surf. I've been, I'm a San Francisco resident, and I actually got involved in surf therapy. I'm a veteran. I'm a veteran, uh, through the United States Marine Corps. And I'm just calling to support what they're doing and I realize how important surf therapy is and how crucial it is to the people involved in that, in those organizations. So, that's, I'm just calling on behalf of them.
Thank you. Okay, I don't see any more hands raised, oh, I do see another hand raised, actually.
Mayor, we have Megan Hannibut, if you could state your name for the record.
Yes, my name is Megan Hannibut and I'm calling today as a San Francisco resident, as a representative of City Surf Project and as an ally to the Brown Girl Surf community. And I just want to speak as a lifetime surfer, as someone who grew up with a very privileged access to the ocean my entire life. And I want to speak to the immense importance of that space for me as a woman of color, as the only woman of color on my beaches back east and the transformational impact that that had on me as a youth and currently as an adult. And that is, as I said, it, it was a privilege that I was able to do so and, and able to have that access. And here as a new surfer to San Francisco, um, to the Bay Area, recognizing that when I paddle out in, in Lindemar, in Pacifica, that there are some faces that look like mine and like the kids that are represented in our programs, but they are, it's, it's incredibly important for them to feel like they belong and to feel like they are able and allowed to, to be there. And I just, I can't emphasize that enough here for the committee. And I, and I thank you for hearing my words and thank you to the organizers and those who have done incredible work on this issue over the last few years.
Thank you, Megan.
Caller nine seven three three has called back in, if you want to try again.
Uh, thank you, yes, my name is Carolyn Harameel. I'm a homeowner and member of Pacifica Housing For All. And I want to thank you for all your hard work and dedication in keeping our city running during a pandemic. And tonight I have to ask, I urge you pass a temporary eviction moratorium. The eviction moratorium in place now in San Mateo County is set to expire at the end of this month. If the Board of Supervisors do not extend this moratorium, we could see many people in our community forced to leave their homes. So, it's important for the council to protect the tenants here in Pacifica. Secondly, I urge you to pass the permitted parking program as outlined by Pacifica Resource Center that was proposed months ago. I also ask that you publicize the provisions of this program in order to correct misinformation that is being circulated. This program, a partnership between the city and the faith community, would give safety to people living in motorhomes and help them get assistance needed to obtain permanent housing. So, having more homeless people, our people living in unsafe places will not make Pacifica safe, healthy or compassionate. And I also want to say, I ghetto everything that has been said tonight by Advocates for Brown Girl Surf Club. Thank you, thank you for listening.
Thank you, Carolyn.
We'll now hear from Shalini Cannon. Please state your name for the record.
Hi, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Sorry about that. Good evening, City Council, my name is Shalini Cannon. And I grew up in San Mateo County in Foster City and I'm here to speak on behalf of what some of my fellow volunteers at Brown Girl Surf today have spoken about. Though I grew up in San Mateo County, not even too far from the coast, I, I just want to explain about how there are some barriers to coastal access that aren't just the means or transportation. My parents are immigrants to the US from India, but I grew up in California, born in the US, making me first gen. And there's some cultural barriers to accessing the coast as well. My parents were always afraid of the ocean because they grew up in a part of the world where the ocean currents are really strong and it was very dangerous for them to go in the ocean. So, in my mind, growing up, I always thought swimming in the ocean is dangerous and the coast was a place to maybe look at but not touch. I never experienced the healing power or the sheer joy of swimming in the ocean. And that's something I only found when I was entering college. So, since then, uh, the only time I first learned to surf was actually when I lived in Hawaii just two years ago. And now I'm twenty-six, so at age twenty-four, I discovered the joy of surfing. And since coming back to California, I realized the coast isn't something that I have to fear here, even though, um, even though generations before me have. And Brown Girl Surf is a way that people who grew up like me can access the coast and for people of color from all walks of life to enjoy the coast. And by having access to permits, um, Pacifica could, could really welcome a diverse community from within the county and beyond. Thank you.
Thank you, Shalini. Um, looks like we have one more comment, except it's from Olivia Van Damme and she's already spoken this evening, so unfortunately, we only can take your first comment, Olivia, but thank you. And I think with that, I can close oral communications and we will move on to council communications. I am looking for a raised hand. Councilmember Votolos.
I attended lots and lots of the county meetings. I did get about thirty-five emails today, um, from the Brown Girl Surf, never having heard anything about it before. It was, uh, over a lot of, a lot, a lot of emails today. Um, also the emails from defund the police and some angry callers, which I don't appreciate at all. We can have peaceful conversations. And please fill out the census, it's really important for everyone. And that's it for me today.
Thank you, Sue. On my screen, I, I lose count, I lose Mayor Pro Tem Beckmeyer, so, um, Mary, are you on, you're on mute?
It's, uh, Sue Beckmeyer was raising her hand before me.
Oh, okay, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Beckmeyer, thank you. That's okay, I yield to councilmember Beer. Okay, welcome back, uh, councilmember Beer.
Thank you, thank you so much, it's really good to be back, hello, everybody. Uh, I'm going to take some time tonight, so just so you know, I got a few things to say. One of them, not one of them, I want to start by sincerely thanking the community for the outpouring of support that I received after suffering a stroke in mid-April. It was a really scary time for me. It's still a really scary time for me and so I appreciate all the love and support, especially from the ladies of New Life Christian Fellowship who fed me daily. So, they kept me nourished and they brought me back to health in so many different ways. So, thank you, New Life, I really appreciate you so much and I'm not going to cry about that. Also, I want to thank my fellow councilmembers for filling in for me. It's never my intention to have to miss so many meetings, that felt really weird for me. So, I'm really happy to be back, even though, you know, we're like in this weird time in our lives. So, I attended a few things, a couple of things this week. I attended Senator Hill's roundtable on housing, so I got to hear from other cities about what they're doing as far as housing is concerned and hear about the new assembly bills that are coming up, so that was very interesting. It was good for me to sit in something and just listen and learn, I really appreciated that opportunity. And then the first time out in public was to participate in the peaceful march on Saturday. So, I want to thank Molly Hendricks and her family for, um, creating such an awesome event for our city. It was beautiful, beautiful, beautiful and so many folks showed up and it was such a wonderful way for me to come back to the community and see all these people that I love and, and to participate in such a powerful event. There's one thing that was kind of ironic about it is, is the march started out standing underneath the Statue of Portola and, you know, I thought that was kind of, although there was some irony there. I hear a lot of people say, uh, there is no racism in Pacifica. And I had some conversations with the young people I work with and, uh, they, they said, if you have an opportunity to make a statement, you need to make a statement. And so I'm going to be doing that now because as everyone was standing under the Statue of Portola, I realized that Pacifica is, it's, it's been built on racism. And it's really important for us to understand that, that, you know, the Spanish exhibition came in and after that, the Alone people, you know, were tragically killed. And so, there's that piece, right? There was a Japanese internment camp in Sharp Park, in Sharp Park, okay? So, this is like remnants of racism. Our houses, this is, this is a red line community. And so if you look at deeds from people's homes, um, when I was knocking on doors in my campaign, a woman showed me the deed of her house, the original deed and on it, it stated, "Do not sell this property to," and down the list it went. And so, that's, that's like the ground that our community is built upon. And so I think now that COVID has stopped everything and we now have an opportunity to, to come together, to really dig deep and think about our own privilege and how we can use that to support the, the protests against systematic racism and, and how we can use our platforms in these ways. And we can talk, we have conversations in our homes and in our community and in our churches. It's just time for us to come together to really dig deep and do those things. I want to thank the Pacifica Police Department for coming out, for supporting the march and for everything else. I have complete trust and respect for our police department and that trust is reflected in the budget. And so, I want you all to know that I support our police department and I think we also have an opportunity to work closely with our law enforcement, to take a look at policy, see what's going on there, see if changes need to be made, like do it really transparently and together as a community. Because that's what, uh, Pacifica is really good at, right? We all come out, we all come together and we support each other. I saw that when I was sick, I saw that on Saturday and I'm proud, I'm proud to be a, a member of the community of Pacifica, so it's good to be back, thanks.
Okay, well, I, um, welcome you back, I'm very happy to see your face. Thank you. Um, I too attended the march on Saturday and I was really struck by how, um, well-coordinated everyone was, even though nobody was coordinating the people there. The people were coordinating themselves. There was some very basic guidance given around which direction to start off. And the thing that struck me, um, and really made me so proud was the way in which Pacifica Police stepped up immediately to control traffic. So that the people who had showed up, who'd spent their time and their effort to create signs, to take their time to be there and to make that very clear statement by their physical presence, were safe, they were able to do what they needed to do. And why, the reason that they were there, they didn't have to stop and wait for traffic to go and somehow, it was just the right thing at the right time. And I, you know, was wondering, just still wonder, how far back did that line of traffic go? You know, it's, um, in, did it go to the tunnel, did it go past the tunnel? I, I wonder how far that line of traffic on San Pedro Avenue went. I could see the line going up and over the hill on Highway One. And every time I stopped and looked, I could still see people coming from the community center, heading towards the intersection of Lindemar and, um, Highway One. And every, it was a giant U shape of people and, and they were still coming and they were still coming and they were still coming. It was such a powerful, amazing experience, um, even driving there. I parked where I work and, um, at Cabrillo School and see, on my way to park, there were families and, and groups of people with signs and strollers and, you know, it just families, different groups of people coming out, everyone turning out. A guy, and, and I don't know if their child goes to Cabrillo or not, got out of his car right next to me with crutches and a boot on his foot. And they, he marched all the way around to, um, to the intersection at Crespey and Highway One, I don't think he made it over the switchbacks, but, um, it was just a really, and then, then adding to that, the piece about all of the people who were driving, who had, who were not going to march, who were not going to walk, who had decided in advance that they were going to do their demonstrating in their car. So, they had their, you know, signs and whatever. And then the combination, and I kept wondering, how many people that are on the highway now had no idea this was even happening and are just supporting? Because all I heard was support, I didn't hear anybody yelling, what are you doing? Why are you doing this? It was, it was just an amazing experience, so, um, that was pretty pivotal for me. Attended the Board of Supervisors meeting on, um, June second. I've been keeping up with those, trying to really glean whatever I can about our various, um, response programs for COVID. And was very closely listening to the presentation made by Peggy, um, Assistant County Manager Peggy Jensen around the nonprofit groups that had received funding through San Mateo County Strong. One area I'm really concerned about, um, and I've received some communications from non-art-based nonprofits in our own town, from Cindy Abbott, um, specifically, but also from folks at Spindrift, is the impact this is having for nonprofits that can't do their programs or can't do them the way they normally would do them. And, um, and that's another area that's really significantly impacted. And so, I'm looking for, you know, more resources for those folks. There was a beautification advisory committee meeting last week and it was a really great Zoom meeting. Welcomed a new, two new members, one who'd been attending a lot of meetings. And that was great, just, we took a real, a little bit longer than usual so that the new members could talk about why they wanted to be involved and learn a little about each other and, and that was really beneficial. So, there's, there was a big update on the Cabrillo Crosswalk Project, which is nearing completion, but one piece that involves, potentially will involve the beautification advisory committee is the fact that there is no funding source for doing the landscaping. So, that's an important piece that they discussed. They also were discussing proposed changes to the Mayor's Beautification Awards Project and making it a more ongoing process than a kind of a one-time deal each year. And gave updates on the status of the planters, the bulb-out planters at Palmetto Avenue and at the community center. In light of the rain we've had and now springtime, we have a lot of weeds cropping up and people are working on getting on top of that. I attended the housing meeting that councilmember Beer was speaking of, which was very enlightening, learning about the legislation coming up and, uh, there's a lot more to learn. So, it's a lot of homework there. And I represented, um, you know, Mayor Martin at a meeting of the Silicon Valley and San Mateo County COVID response, we, how do we reopen? I, I mean, it's a super-long name and I can't really remember the name of it right now. It's a group that's meeting, um, three different times and doing a, a real deep study and, and the data of how COVID has impacted different segments of our various communities and, and how. and and how to address reopening um from a business standpoint, from a commu- from a communication standpoint, and how to put the pieces back together. So um there'll be two more meetings coming up. And I don't think they're scheduled yet, but more on that later. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protonia. Mike O'Neil?
Hi, I took and um attended the SFO Airport Roundtable. And I know everybody in Pacifica has noticed that it seems to be a lot quieter. And that's because according to the gentleman from the airport, the airport has lost ninety-five percent of their air traffic due to COVID. And their best and most optimistic prediction is that they hope to get fifty percent of the flights back in two to three years. Uh the bad news, though, is because there's like forty-five thousand jobs at the airport, seventy percent of the employees have been furloughed because of the ninety-five percent drop in flights. So there is a double edged sword to um our quiet. On a bad note, note that does affect Pacifica is the uh FAA is again looking at and actually going to be adopting some within the next two years. And I know that sounds, two years, oh, we got time to think about it. But now they're looking at it, developing the regulations that will become effective in two and a half or three years regarding supersonic jets. And apparently, what I was advocating for in the letter that the roundtable will be sending is that they will be looking at the, when they go supersonic, right now, they're not allowed to do that over land. And they go supers- press the button, go supersonic over water. What I was asking them to do is to set some sort of standard that it's over the ocean and not at the corner of Crespey and Highway One. Because let's face it, that's over water. And then that was brought up, the fact that when they do do their supersonic button, the sound, the sound wave could go back as far as fifteen miles, fifteen to seventeen miles. So which would make us the, you know, loudest, I would guess. I'm not, you know, that's way above my pay grade, but I'm assuming we would be the loudest. So I will be um trying to get more information on this. And there was also a little blurb mentioned that I thought was rather interesting and we should really try to look into this, is that if you are on the National Registry of Historic Places, you can actually have some say in flight patterns. And the building at Sharp Park Restaurant, I believe, is a nationally registered historic place, as well as Sweet Sweeney Ridge up at the top of the hill. So I'm going to be trying to find out more in regards to how we can push that for flight patterns. And that was brand new, I'd never heard of that before. Another note, I have been on the committee for the high school for reopening of schools. And I think that is going to be a very, very big challenge for both Pacifica School District and Jefferson High School District. They're going to have to be taking, right now, they haven't come out with the final guidelines, but they're looking at taking the temperature of every kid coming to school. Limited class sizes where they might have to run two shifts or some, some kids will only go two days a week. And then the the other second shift will go the other two days a week. Sports, um there's going to be probably limited sports and limited after-school programs. So that is going to be a challenge for our kids, parents, et cetera, because obviously a lot of parents can't go to work unless their kids are in school and or the older kid in high school is there to babysit the younger kid coming home. So again, kind of bouncing off with um Councilwoman Beckmeyer was saying there is going to be a lot of challenges as we open up and move forward. That's my report.
Okay, great. Um, okay, uh, my turn.
I uh could, we have not forgotten about the shelter in place that we are in. There's just been a lot going on. Uh we are all still pretty tuned into what's going on. That's why tonight there's um a new agenda item. Uh we're going to be discussing uh outdoor eateries and uh how 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 that will work in Pacifica. So that's good news. We're also paying attention to uh the, you know, the guidelines from the uh County Health Officer. We want to get our nail salons open, our hair salons open, our gyms. We're, we're all tuned in. So we're thinking of you, we're sending you um all of our uh good, positive thoughts and energies and just hoping everybody just continues to be smart. I for one was called back up to my office. Marin County lifted their shelter in place on offices. So I uh today was my first day back at the office in Marin County. And it was very interesting, very different. And um I I look forward to uh, you know, one day not having to worry about all this stuff. But uh in the meantime, we're, we're thinking of you all. I want to uh inform everyone that uh Recology, I know everybody's cleaning out their houses because they're all being sheltered. So just to remember that Recology is doing styrofoam and extra cardboard drop off at the office. You can do that at twenty-three oh five Palmetto Avenue, Mondays through Fridays, uh seven thirty AM to one PM. I did that myself. It's super easy. Throw it in your car, front seat, you won't forget about it. The shredding event has been postponed to Saturday, August eighth. So call the office if, and also call the office if you have any bulky item pickups, because they just resumed. Six five oh three five five nine thousand. Uh I wanted to give you an update on uh Peninsula Clean Energy. You know, I'm on the board. And in recent months, there's been a very contentious debate as to whether or not we should accept nuclear energy as part of our, one of our energy sources. Our current makeup is hydro, wind, and solar. We started talking about this late last year and it led into this year. And uh while nuclear is considered a renewable material, uh well, a renewable resource, the materials are not. And it's often considered dirty and dangerous. So I'm happy to report that the board voted to not accept nuclear power as one of our energy sources by a narrow uh one vote. It was very contentious. And uh I think that uh, and I hope that I represented Pacifica well, because I believe in my heart of hearts and after talking to a lot of people about this, that uh that the folks who are who have opted in for Peninsula Clean Energy uh in Pacifica would would be happy about that. I wanted to let everyone know, Pacifica Beach Coalition launched, launched a street to beach campaign. The goal is to get as many earth heroes as possible to clean up a location and inspire others while staying safe and respecting county and state orders. You can find out more about how you can do that and how you can report your your cleanup. So it's not just that you're going to go out there and throw it in your trash. You're going to get online, you're going to report what you found and how many volunteers. So we're still hosting our cleanups. We're doing it. You're still doing it. And you're an extension of the Beach Coalition because uh you care and you're an earth hero. Okay, uh thank you to our Pacifica Police Department. Thank you to all those who uh organized the uh peaceful protests in Pacifica. Uh City Surf Project, Black Girl Surf, Brown Girl Surf hosted a paddle out on Friday, June fifth. And it was super special. They invited people of color to come up and share their experiences and they were very touching. And uh I'll talk a little bit more about that later. I want to thank uh Molly and Shannon who organized the protest on uh Saturday. It was also very special. They had a a special speaker. And he talked about his experience of being a black man and the the biases that he experiences and the racial prejudice that he experiences. And we can read about it or you can hear a story, but until you hear the story, it it um it it really changes you. And I I believe that we've, we've heard enough. We will, we will, let me rephrase that. We will never stop hearing enough, but now enough is enough. And tonight, I uh at the, hopefully my council agrees with me, I'd like to adjourn in memory of those that lives will not be lost in vain. George Floyd, Breonna Taylor, Ahmaud Arbery. Tonight, I want to challenge all of us to follow through on our promise to do the work to end systemic racism in the United States and in Pacifica. Our marches, our memorials, our paddle outs, our stillness. It's now time to show the world what it all was for. So this is our call to action. We are all being called to act. And we're all raising our hands and saying, yeah, we will march, we will protest, we will be still, we will think. But we also have to do. So we have an opportunity here and right now is the time to make it count. I I have a few things I'd like to say and I'd like to request. And I'm hope, I hope that my fellow council members can hear me and uh with an open mind and an open heart and given everything that everyone's going through right now. We have a really unique opportunity here. So we, as council members, have all received a lot of emails. And I'm going to give you some of the topics. One of them is President Obama's call to mayor, city council members for an a um an alliance called My Brother's Keeper. Okay? It's basically uh the call to action is for police oversight on bodies to address the use of force policies. To quote the website, more than a thousand people are killed by policing every year in America. And black people are three times more likely to be killed than white people. That, that's the most important part. Black people are three times more likely to be killed than white people. We can take the steps and make reforms to combat racism and violence. But we can't do it until we all agree together that this is what we must do. So the call to action is to review police force policies. And we should be doing that anyway, is to engage our communities. We don't have to worry about that because our communities are already engaging us. We are lucky enough to live in the most, one of the most passionate places in the United States, I I would, I would beg to say. And to report the findings of our review and to reform where necessary. I think that's uh, I think that's a no-brainer. And so my, my request to my fellow council members is, do I have a consensus to agree that we should look at this uh alliance, My Brother's Keeper, to sign on? It's a basically a mayor and council members sign on to this and agree, yeah, we're going to look at this stuff. And yeah, we're going to engage the community. I think these are, these are pretty easy steps that we should take. I think we're going to be left behind if we don't.
So Madam Mayor, if I
Yes.
understand your request, you're requesting that it's, the council want to put this on as a, another agenda item to discuss. Since
Yes.
it's not the agenda for tonight, we can't take action. But certainly, if you want to place it on, on the next agenda, we can do that.
Yeah, and so to that point, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask for sort of a consensus on putting a few items on the agenda. That's one of them that can be lumped in together. So the eight can't wait campaign, we've received probably more emails than we can count on this. We've all probably gotten on some lists. Maybe it's just the mayor, I don't know, but I've received numerous emails. Will you all shake your heads if you're getting emails on eight can't wait? Great. So the eight can't wait campaign is the demand for action from your representatives. So the community reaches out to us and says, uh, look at your police policies. There are eight policies that we'd like to look at for and ensure that they are or are not included in your in your policies. So I'm going to go through them real quick. Ban chokeholds and strangleholds, requires de-escalation strategies, warning before shooting, exhausting all alternatives before shooting, duty to intervene, ban shooting and moving vehicles, has use of force continuum, requires comprehensive reporting. And so my request is um, my call to action is to my council members, can we also add this to a, an agenda item along with the mayor's um call to action for Obama's My Brother's Keeper Alliance? And uh and then the, the third point is, we've also gotten a lot of emails uh about the um the idea of defunding the police. I'm not supporting for or against this. I'm saying that the community wants to have a discussion on this, a lot of the community members. So I think that um we need to have that open discussion and talk about what it would look like. What does defunding mean? Some people don't even know what that means. And maybe even have a study session on it. So I think there are a lot of people that have a lot of really important things that they want to to say right now. So my, my um, my question would be for my fellow council members, for those three items, do I uh have a consensus that we could agendize those at some point soon? Because now is a very important time. I, I see Mike's waving his hand.
Yeah, I actually pressed the right hand button, whatever. I would prefer a study session rather than agendizing it. I mean, we will still get a staff report on, you know, what the particulars are and also on what our present policies are. It's just what you're talking about are pretty in-depth. And I think that it would be better to have a more informal discussion than the regimented formal agendizing it would be on a council meeting. But I also
I have no problem with that.
I also don't know how a study session works, you know, given our current operating systems. You know what I mean?
We can still have a study session.
And it would still be under the same constraints as we have now?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, thanks, Mike. Um Mary?
Yeah, I'd definitely be uh in favor of a study session, because I think it gives us an opportunity to also allow information, you know, to be shared with our community so that everybody understands like what we have and what's working and what's not working. And then we can go from there. So yeah, with our, with our law enforcement, you have them participate in in those conversations.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I agree with all that. Oh, go ahead, Sue.
No, I just said I agree to the study session.
I agree to the study session as well. And I would like to know if there's some kind of platform we can use where we can have multiple people visible, engaging on a virtual town hall format or whatever. The school district, Pacifica School District has a call every Friday with the superintendent and there's like a hundred and something people on there. The county has, you know, I mean, I know we have a community of thirty-nine thousand, so a hundred something isn't a lot. But it's better than having, you know, nine people's pictures and everybody else is out there somewhere. I would like to know if there's some kind of way of, of doing it virtually, but with some visual representation of folks.
Okay, um, great. And I think uh Councilmember Vardalas also agreed to a study session. Okay, so thank you for hearing me out on those items. Uh and so when, when all this stuff goes down, I, I, I don't sit silently, so I try to think about, what can I do, what can I do? So um I uh, I looked up who is our uh, who are our officials that are working on uh racism issues and uh, you know, for what is going on, police brutality? And please, Pacifica Police Department, don't take any of this personally. So Jackie Spear, uh along with Minnesota Representative, is, are working on um a resolution for uh to combat police brutality and racism. And so stay tuned for more information on that. That's something that you can do, is support people who are who beli- who believe in the same things you do. Also, you can use inclusive language. That is really easy. But it's hard because we're so used to it. We're so used to using uh language that is uh, is biased. And back when, in November, when Pacifica went along with the um United Against Hate Campaign, that was the campaign that caused for a local civic action by people in uh the Bay Area to stop the hate and implicit biases that are dangerous threat. to safety and stability of our neighborhoods. Uh, we hosted, the City of Pacifica, a change your language, change your, uh, change your life, why inclusive language matters. So, some of the examples were instead of using the word black sheep, use the word renegade. We have, we have made black is bad and we have to stop doing that. So, uh, you know, uh, why is a black mark bad, right? Instead, use the word tainted. The, we, we have to start having these, these thoughts, my, you know, changes. And, um, if you want to learn more about how you can incorporate inclusive language into your everyday, please contact me. And I will connect you with some really special people, people who have given, uh, speech, speeches to UCLA's, um, you know, graduating class on, uh, you know, why leaders use inclusive language and, and, you know, the inclusive language of leaders. So, um, so that's something that you can do every day. Uh, one other thing you can do is check in with your black and brown friends. A lot of them are not okay right now. Uh, you know, it's an important and uncomfortable, uh, question, but, but it needs to be had. How are you doing? How are you feeling? You have a, a teenage boy. How, how, how are they dealing with this? Um, those things are so important to be having. And, um, so that, those are a couple of things that you can do. And, uh, I started looking at, well, what can I do? I, I'm the mayor of a small town in California and been on council for a while, been on parks, beaches and rec, uh, done a lot of community activism. And, uh, back in two thousand eighteen, I tried to work with City Surf Project and, and working on nonprofit status, uh, for surf permits. And unfortunately, for us in Pacifica, Half Moon Bay stepped up to the plate. And they were able to work in the, in Half Moon Bay. But, but now we have an opportunity to change that. And I'm bringing it to everyone's attention here because, uh, we need a plan. And, um, at this paddle out on Friday, uh, it, it, I mean, not that you don't know it, but until you see it, 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 it's, it's, it's looks so different. So, so my challenge is to, to the Parks, Beaches and Recreation Commission to revisit the permitting process. I think that we need to reform it. I think that we definitely need to have, uh, a nonprofit status where groups like Black Girl, Brown Girl Surf, City Surf Project can operate clinics in Pacifica. Right now, there's no process for nonprofits who serve primarily black and brown youth for permits. Okay? They're, they're basically shut out. So, what that means is that if I'm black or brown, or if I don't have enough money, I can't go to Pacifica and get a surf lesson unless I have money, unless I have transportation. And, and, and that's just not okay. We need to make sure that we are giving equal footing to everyone. And through those non, through a nonprofit permit, we will be able to do that. Um, the youth who rely on the nonprofits to transport them to the beach can help us feel safe and confident because they're trained. Okay? Um, surf nonprofits in the surrounding cities have a high degree of cooperation. Uh, I'm not saying that we are not cooperative. We haven't, we just haven't gotten there yet. And now's, now's the time for us to do that. Um, I have, uh, guidelines for what equitable access would look like. So, what would a nonprofit that, um, would be, uh, able to apply for such a status look like? Uh, they would, the organization would have expertise in providing surf programming to low-income or underrepresented groups who face obstacles such as, but not limited to, transportation costs, disenfranchisement, general public access and/or surfing on the beach. You heard a lot of people tonight say that they, they just don't see people out there looking like them in the water. There's a reason. And, um, and we can stop that. And we can help get everyone out there. Um, so, I, there, I have, I have very tactical way we can do that. And I know that our Parks, Beaches and Recreation has the power to look at this and revise our permitting process. So, I'm going to challenge the, the Parks, Beaches and Recreation Commission to do that. I hope that I have the support from council also, that I'm not speaking out of turn, that something would, like this, would appeal to not just me, but everyone in the City of Pacifica to make sure that we are doing everything we can to provide everyone with access. Um, and then, uh, and, and if anyone has anything to say about that, please feel free to chime in.
Mayor Martin?
Yeah.
Kevin's city manager. Um, I guess the, the question, uh, similar to the other items is to get a sense whether the council is interested in agendizing an item about our camps, uh, and particularly surf camps to determine whether they want to delegate work on that program to the Parks, Beaches and Recreation Commission. So, um, it's a significant work item. Uh, Director Perez, who's on the line and can speak more about it, um, you know, uh, estimates it would probably be two different study sessions with PBNR. And, you know, the staff work necessary to support that. And so, as an additional, uh, work item for, for PBNR, you know, we, we need a, an agendized item for the council to discuss that and understand how the program, uh, currently works. That is the, the, uh, the, um, camp permitting program and, and make a decision about how and, and when to uh, move that into PBNR Commission's, uh, work.
Uh, Mary, you have a henry's?
No, it was done before, but yeah, I, I, I would be okay with that, with agendizing it.
Mayor Proton?
Like I said, I never heard anything about this until today when I got a lot of really critical emails on something that I had no idea about. So, um, I would definitely like to agendize it.
Absolutely. I mean, I didn't know anything about it either. And, but anything that's promoting access and equity makes sense to me. Um, so, I don't think there was, uh, you know, conspiracy or a intentional exclusionary, um, goal. But that's not to say that the impact of some policies that we may have had for whatever, you know, however long, I don't know. I haven't served on PBNR. Uh, I don't know enough about it, but I'm certainly willing to look at it and, and, of course, I mean, of course, we would look at it. And I think that PBR, PBNR Commission is the right body to do the dissecting and the, you know, figuring out and then recommend, you know, uh, one study session, two study sessions, come back to council, uh, you know, whatever they think is the best. But absolutely think they're the right body to, to work on that. With council, of course, but, um, yeah, that's my feeling.
Thank you. Sue, uh, Mike?
A question I would have for staff, um, and possibly the city attorney is obviously this is June eighth, okay? Is there a sense of urgency for this summer? Because I would assume, um, some surf camps are July, August, when school is out or possibly out, whatever. That's to be determined also. Um, is there a sense of urgency that we can ch, make any changes? If there, if this is an ordinance, because again, like the other council members, I didn't even know. Be honest with you, I guess, I didn't even know we issued permits for surf camps at the beach, to be honest with you. But, um, I am, is there a sense of urgency that this can even be done this year? Or are we talking twenty twenty-one?
Well, uh, I'll, I'll, I'll start and then Director Perez can, can come online. Um, is a significant program revision to, to revisit how the permitting of camps works. The, the, uh, camps that are already permitted are starting the design of their programs and, and operation now under the limited health order, uh, constraints. And so, uh, my, my guess, but I'll defer to Director Perez on it, is that it would not be possible to revise this program uh, in time for this summer's, uh, uh, round of, of surf camps. I don't know how long they extend into the fall or, or what have you, but, uh, with a couple PBNRs, the PBNR Commission isn't even meeting right now. Um, and, and hasn't, hasn't met in the virtual environment. Uh, they, they could, um, but, uh, Director Perez is on, he can probably provide a little bit more context for that. Mike, you're on mute.
On mute.
Sorry. Got to make sure you don't hear me eating. Um, uh, good evening. Uh, we do have, just as, uh, uh, the city manager said, we have, uh, four camps right now and they just opened the parking lot, or we just opened it a week and a half ago. And we only have one that's operational right now. And they are preparing their, uh, guidelines for COVID response. Um, the permitting process is an annual process and, uh, most of them that do operate year-round uh, lost a lot of business in the last three months. And I think they're hoping to catch up. Um, and I do believe we probably could, you know, talk about this with the commission in about two study sessions. Uh, it also depends on, you know, uh, if there's going to be any direction from council. Currently, we have a limit of four camps. So, if the direction is to increase that limit and, you know, add in other camps, that may, uh, be easier to do than if we said, well, we're going to keep the limit and we're going to have folks reapply at whatever date that be. So, um, some of the, some of the, uh, timing will probably, uh, depend on your direction.
And, and I'll add, I, I believe that an element of, uh, the, the program is, is, uh, communications with, maybe consulting with, I'm not sure, uh, the coastal commission. So, about, about the camp operations.
Well, I just wanted to set expectations for everybody in terms of how long this is going to go and the factors as to why there is a limit of four camps. Is it, you know, is it safety? Is it just space? I don't know. So, I would appreciate agendizing it for us to discuss. But I just wanted to set expectations for all the nonprofit groups that this might not happen this year or would happen this year. So, that's why I asked the question. So, from staff, I have the impression that we are probably talking twenty twenty-one? Or ver, or later twenty twenty? The, it won't be ready in July or August.
I, I don't think that that's actually even a part of it. It's, it's just about a permit process and the revision of the process. And, and having PBNR study it. And what the timing is, is kind of irrelevant at this point. From my perspective, having served on PBNR and gone through this abs, actual process before of surf permitting.
Well, I just like to set expectations.
No, I, I
So that we don't have people at every council meeting saying it when it is in motion, but we can't do anything about it because we have to go through our process. So, I just wanted to set expectations.
Yeah, you, you won't, you won't
Yes.
people showing up every meeting. Um, but it's very timely and that's why everybody showed up tonight. Um,
And that's fine. That's fine.
Right.
And I'm more than happy to look at it. I just want to set expectations that this is the Titanic. It's not a speedboat.
Yeah, okay. That's, I, I agree with you. We should set expectations. I, um, also, uh, looking forward to PBNR getting back, uh, maybe on a Zoom meeting because you have a lot of great work to do and a lot, lot of work backing up. Um, uh, you know, the return to operations plan is very overwhelming. So, I respect and appreciate having seen firsthand, um, everything that you're doing. So, thank you. Uh, I think it's very, uh, and should probably get moved to the top of the list somewhere. Um, given that, um, it's not, it's not a summer thing. It's just, it's not around here for a year. So.
And I, I, I guess I'd like to add a bit to that is, is, uh, Director Perez's department is one of the most impacted departments right now in terms of designing reopening programs for our childcare programs and our other, uh, kid, uh, recreation programs, et cetera. So, there's a lot of work that, that they're really focused on and trying to figure this, this stuff out. Um, this is another thing to, to add to that workload. So, in terms of, um, expectations about timeline, just to keep, keep that in mind.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Um, like I, like I said, I have a lot of, uh, very tactical, uh, recommendations, if you will. Um, and so, you know, similar to some, maybe something like our B ordinance, you know, it might be something that they can look at, study, um, definitely a community input and then, um, and, and go forward. So, I agree, it's not an immediate thing, but I think it is timely and important. Um, so, uh, I think that is, uh, the direction. Oh, sorry, Sue, go ahead. Sue Vara.
I can see adding because, but how many other groups are there that want to do this? I mean, it sort of is reminiscent of the marijuana dispensaries where you had twenty people for six positions. I mean, if we had six openings for, for, um, surf camps, how many people would apply?
Yeah, but again, this is the point about the equity access. It's not about how many people want to apply because once the nonprofit status is out there, the, the PBNR will come up with the parameters of how, uh, how that will be applied for.
Okay. Well, that's what I was saying. I could see adding it instead of going through the whole process of
I just want to remind the council, we don't want to get into start discussing the program, uh,
Yeah, yeah.
pros and cons or the parameters. We, where the first step would be to agendize it to, for referral to the PBNR uh, with some basic information. So.
We can't just make a referral right now to the PBNR?
It's, uh, you, well, I, I would say a couple of things. Uh, you, you, you don't have, no one knows the, the background to the program and the permitting of the program and who the existing permit holders are and all of that development information that the PBNR went through many years ago. Um, and, and second, this wasn't an agendized item for the public to weigh in on, uh, knowing that it was going to be on the agenda.
Right. But again, eh, even, even given that information, it's not something that council could just say, PBNR, can you, can you take a look at this? Because it's in your, it's in your court now. And then, then it'll come back to us once they make a recommendation?
Uh, I, 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 again, there's a, there's a lot of information that I think the council would want to consider in about when or how for the PBR to, to take this up. Um, I mean, in terms of legally, uh, I'll defer to the city attorney if, if the council can make, do a referral to PBNR now. But in terms of, uh, in terms of, uh, transparency and policy about taking up that endeavor, um, it would be more appropriate to have it formally agendized for the council.
Yeah. And I, I would agree with that.
Uh, do you agree legally or you, you just agree?
Yes. No, legally. Tonight, I think council can give direction to the city manager. Uh, but in terms of uh, remanding or setting it to, um, a specific commission, that would need to be an agendized item. But if you wanted to give direction to the city manager, the city manager can then take that direction and, um, implement it. But it really should not be a direction that should be deliberated on by the council.
Right, right. No, I, I understand that. We're not deliberating though.
Well, my, I'll type, my concern is that there have been enough comments from the council on this item that we're getting close to deliberating.
Oh, I'm, I'm actually just asking process, about the process. So, I thought that we have in the past, and maybe I'm wrong, but I, I thought that we could say to a commission, can you work on that so we don't have to? Or we have to actually agendize something to say, can, can, can a commission work on this?
Well, this, this kind of falls into one of those things like the type of thing that might come up at goal setting. Um, eh, eh, you know, we want to look at the B ordinance or we want to look at, at other things. And the council is able to set that. We want to hold a PBNR to hold a study session about a bike park in town. And the council discusses those things at goal setting. And that's a process for getting them on the work plan. Um, so, so similarly, if something comes up in the middle of the year and the, the council doesn't have and the, the council doesn't have the background or the info- information, what we usually would do is say, let's agendize the item to be able, for staff to provide the background and the council to discuss publicly with noticing, um, so those, you know, for and against the issue can come out and talk, uh, and decide whether you want to take it up, uh, understand what the staff resource impacts are, understand, you know, what the timing impacts are and, uh, recommend, uh, you know, direct, direct it to be referred to the, to a commission.
I believe.
Ordinary process.
The city managers got direction that three people, three council members would like this agendized. I think maybe we can move on.
Okay, this, that, that's fine, Mike. You shut me down and that's upsetting.
Why didn't shut you down? I mean, it's the horse.
Okay, so the last thing I want to say is, um, in our return to operations plan, uh, city manager, um, and I mentioned this to you before, but I just want, um, for the record, um, I'm sure when we are going back to whatever our normal looks like, that we'll be doing sort of a postmortem because we will be in another emergency situation, unfortunately, at some point. Hopefully it's not a pandemic, but, um, if and when those, uh, that time comes, when we actually have the time to sit down and do a postmortem on how did this go and how did this goes? I do that for all my projects, projects harvesting. So what does that look like? And one of the things that I just want to make sure is on our list is if we are to do beach parking lot closures, what are the impacts? Uh, everywhere in the neighborhoods, what are the impacts, um, to the non-neighborhoods? What are the impacts to the people who are still allowed to recreate there? And just making sure that we're putting forth equitable solutions for all. So that's, that, that's the final thing that I have to say. Anyone have anything else? Uh, I think that's enough. We will move on to, um, staff communications unless you need a bright bio break for five minutes? Anybody? Yep. Bio break, five minutes? Okay, we'll be back. It is, uh, nine twelve. We'll be back at nine eighteen. Thank you.
Related to, uh, the restoration of operations plan, as you know, on Friday, uh, or last, late last week, the, the county, passed a new order or, or released the new order regarding outdoor dining and restaurants to be effective Saturday morning. So in a, in a, in a very feverish way, the city attorney's office and planning director Waremeister and others worked hard to come out with some guidelines, uh, that we put out on Friday and, and as well as the emergency order and the council will be learning more about that as item seventeen tonight. So there are some guidelines in place for outdoor dining to occur in Pacifica in compliance with the county health orders. Uh, in additionally, related to the roof, we are, uh, working on finishing up improvements that were made and maintenance, uh, significant maintenance and improvements at the pier and looking at how and when we can reopen the pier for public access and the guidelines that will be applied. So, uh, I think there'll be more information this week coming out about that timeline as well as looking at the, uh, skate park down by the community center and what guidelines need to apply there so that we can, uh, open up, up the skate park. Uh, both of those facilities are going to be, and they're ongoing, uh, operation are going to be highly contingent on the users of those facilities abiding by the health guidelines. And if, uh, if the, you know, masks aren't worn and, and the rules aren't followed, the city could be in a position of having to close those facilities again in the future. So I wanted to mention those. Uh, but let me turn quickly to, uh, to the, the tragic homicide of George Floyd by a police officer in Minneapolis. And we've all, uh, been living that for the last week. And of course, this is all on top of the local emergency related to the coronavirus. So it's a very trying time for everyone. And, uh, there's, you know, comments tonight from all the council members a- about that. Um, and sort of the systemic racism, which is an issue which needs to be, uh, looked at in, in our, in our country. Um, what, uh, I want to make sure because there's been a lot of public dialogue about policing in Pacifica, about, uh, questions about that, um, uh, policing in general, obviously, um, about, uh, defunding police and what does that mean and et cetera. So I've been working on, uh, a, a kind of list of facts and information about policing in Pacifica, about our policies, uh, about use of force. And the chief is going to come up and speak, uh, a bit to that, um, as well as facts about the staffing and functions of our police department. And the reason this information is important for, for the council, and I'll be providing that information to the council, uh, is, is to know, um, you know, the difference between what's happening locally in Pacifica compared to systemic problems that are, uh, you know, elsewhere in, in the region or state or country in order to determine, uh, what it is, uh, Pacifica should be focused on or not. Um, and, and the council has directed a, a study session, uh, you know, to come up with these issues. So we look forward to providing more information. I guess what I would just generally say, um, and I'll touch on the police department functions and staffing, uh, just some high level points, uh, is that our, our police department is very leanly staffed. And two years ago, I did a survey comparison of, uh, other comparable sized cities in San Mateo County. And our police department operates at about twenty-nine percent less staffing than those departments. And if you look at the history of Pacifica, from nineteen eighty-nine, we're operating at thirty-eight percent less staff in police than we had in nineteen eighty-nine. And yet the police department is doing an immense amount of collateral duties, collaborations, innovative collaborations with many organizations in order to maintain an excellent service level to the community. So all to say, the, 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 uh, information sheets that I'm putting together and, and want to share with the council for your information are, uh, critical to understanding, uh, what is happening in policing uh, on, on the staffing size and functions front. And I think that, um, I'll, uh, I'll turn it over to Chief Stidle to talk a little bit about our, our use of force policies and our compliance and our history related to that. Because again, it's really important information for the public to hear, um, and for the council to be aware of. Um, and you know, eh, we have upcoming, uh, preparation for study session on these, on these important topics. And, uh, and, uh, you know, that's going to take some work and focus. And again, uh, reminding the council that now we have sort of the second, uh, pandemic to, to work on, uh, in to- in top of our reopening work. Uh, so there's a lot of work to do, um, and, and we'll look forward to bringing as much information we can to inform the council as possible for that study session. But, uh, Chief Stidle, if, if you're there and want to jump on for a few minutes, that concludes my comments on the topic.
Uh, thank you, community city manager Woodhouse. Yes, I would like to jump in. I never, never, uh, turned down the opportunity to take the mic, as you know. Um, first of all, if I could digress for just a minute, I wanted to, um, as they say, give a big shout out to the community for Saturday's event. Um, experience of Pacifica police officers in the last couple of weeks has been very difficult. We've gone out, provided mutual aid to law enforcement agencies with our own county in San Mateo County where we've dealt some not, with not so peaceful protests, um, where some really bad things were going on. We've also had officers deployed as part of mutual aid to other parts of the Bay Area outside of San Mateo County. And one of the things that the group of officers that I had working in that event on Saturday had to say was, this is a different crowd than we see anywhere else. This is a peaceful crowd. These are people that were carrying black mi- black live, uh, matter signs. And they were also carrying signs denouncing, uh, racial injustice, denouncing, uh, police brutality, all the things that, that, uh, your chief of police and the Pacifica Police Department agree with. But they said the same people that were carrying those signs seemed to like them. They were stopping and they were thanking my officers for being out there and thanking them for what they do. Um, so I think the, the, we were, we were incredibly moved by the event and the, uh, the conversations we had out there. And I can tell you what, I, I don't know of an event that size, there was definitely, at least there was a couple, there must have been a couple of thousand people out there on Saturday. There's not an event that size in our county in this difficult period that's occurred without side mutual aid having to come in to control the event. And I think that's a big testament to the, uh, the people in our community. When they say that they're peaceful and this is a peaceful community, um, they mean it. And it was very well demonstrated on Saturday. I'm very, very proud to be part of this community. Um, I echo the, the comments of the city manager getting down to, um, the use of force business. You know, the police department stance and my stance as I put out, uh, in the early days after that incident, I've seen many things in my career. I've seen, uh, judgment calls, uh, made on use of force events that took only a couple of seconds to take place. Never in my career have I seen an event that took so long to transpire with nobody doing anything about it from law enforcement. Uh, there's no doubt in my mind that that was a murder. And it, uh, it, it, it's shaken us and law enforcement to the core and it sickens us. Um, getting into a little bit about our policies, I want to remind everybody, we've put it out, um, on social media today. It's also been provided to the council. People have questions about our policies and procedures, not just involving the use of force, but anything else. You want to read about how, uh, what are, what are, what our policies are on anti-bias policing? They're there. Um, everything from towing of vehicles to use of force, the policy is online on our website. The, um, the, uh, the link has been distributed, um, as part of our effort to be transparent. So when looking at use of force statistics, in terms of what's going on in Pacifica, prior to the, uh, meeting, we did a, a cursory search, a quick cursory search of our incidents over the last five years. And we're averaging three point five uses of force per year, um, with an average of over nineteen thousand calls for service per year at the Pacifica Police Department, which includes officer initiated activity, traffic stops, pedestrian stops, self-initiated investigations, et cetera. Uh, this, uh, equates to about point zero two percent of calls resulting in some sort of use of force. And in all those five years of use of force cases, there were no serious injuries to anybody involved. And in all those five years of use of force cases, there were no serious injuries to anybody involved, whether it be the officer or the person the officer was trying to detain. I've had several people in the community ask me over the past couple of weeks, can this happen in Pacifica? How you go, how do you prevent this from happening in Pacifica? And we explained to them what our, what our culture is in Pacifica. First of all, we don't lower our standards when we hire. That's part of the reason why many, most police departments can't fill their positions because they're not gonna take substandard people, people that aren't, that don't have the ethics, the morals, and the background that can do this job that we can trust. The, the hiring standards also involve a comprehensive background and a psychological examinations that's designed to try and bring some of this stuff out if someone has these types of tendencies, whether it be aggressive tendencies or, or tendencies to show bias. We have continual training on our use of force, use of force policies and tactics, both hands-on training and training involving the knowledge of how to use the tactics and policies. As far as our documentation goes, every single use of force incident that occurs goes through the sergeant or the supervisor at the scene, it's documented appropriately, and it's sent up through the chain of command to the captains where it's looked into to determine whether it was proper or not. Reports reviewed, body worn camera, video and any video, any other evidence that we have available. And that final recommendation is to whether or not they will be officers were in violation of policy or not. And even if they were invite, were in compliance with policy, is there anything we could have done better? That lands on my desk for my fire, final approval. So no matter what type of force it is, I know about it and I have the opportunity to review all the findings and make my own judgments and recommendations. And finally, we implement a lawful best practice use of force policy. Our policy is a lexible policy, which is vetted by some of the best attorneys in the business as well as use of force experts. We, we keep up on that. And again, we, we, we believe in it. And we train our officers to it and our officers are required to know it. It's something that they are, they're, they're recurring testing on the knowledge of. We do receive quite a bit of training when it comes to use of force. Again, as I already talked about, policy knowledge testing, testing and proficiency. We know what, we know that officers in, you know, use different types of first all the way, you know, from putting their hands on people to weapons. Do they know how to use this type of force? Are they proficient? Can they conduct this type of law enforcement activity in a safe manner to protect the community and to keep it as minimal as possible? We also have bias training. The timing is, was a coincidence on this one. We just finished our, our bias training about a month prior to the George Floyd incident. And again, that's, I try to help our officers avoid bias to assure fair and impartial treatment to all of our community members regardless of the color of their skin. We have defensive tactics training, showing officers how to defend themselves, emphasizing tactics, control combative subjects that require minimal use of force or no weapons at all. And we have crisis intervention training. These are tactics designed to deal with persons in crisis, especially mental health crises. And those tactics in that crisis intervention training emphasize de-escalation tra, tactics. Let's, if we're in a situation where someone is in some sort of crisis, let's work to de-escalate that and defuse that before it ever turns into a situation where some type of force is necessary. So regarding our use of force policy and our practices, de-escalation is mentioned five different areas of our, of our policies, including use of force, dealing with our weapons, dealing with mentally ill individuals, crisis intervention incidents, and handling civil disputes. And aside from that, de-escalation tactics, and this isn't just recent, this is since I've been with the police department for twenty-seven years. The, our, all of our weapons training, even when we go to the range and practice our proficiency, there's always some component of de-escalation that occurs in that training. We do have a duty to intercede. Not only is the law, but it's in our policy. If the officer witnesses excessive force, they're required if in a position to do toe, to do so, to intervene and to stop that. They're also required to report to their supervisor, at which point the supervisor takes it over and informs command staff and it becomes an internal affairs matter. So one of the, one of the topics is use of other resources or techniques prior to shooting. This actually is in-state law, is part of Assembly Bill three ninety-two, which was passed last year and took effect in January, which our policy is in complete compliance with. It discuss, our policy discusses evaluating each situation involving or in light of the circumstances. And we shall use all of our available resources and techniques if reasonably safe and feasible to an objectively reasonable officer. And comprehensive reporting, as I spoke about already, every single use of force gets reported up the chain of command for investigation and for coming to a conclusion of whether or not it was proper or not. And finally, warnings before firing shots. Our policy does not say officers shall warn somebody before prior firing shots. We know the high majority of law enforcement incidents involving the use of firearms occur within a couple of seconds. Officers presented with a threat and they must immediately react to save their own life or save the life of somebody else. In those cases, warning somebody is not warranted. You don't have time. However, our policy does say that when feasible prior to the use of force, including deadly force, the officer should make it known to the, to the person that they're, they're communicating with, that they are a police officer and that force will be used. And there are many occasions where that occurs. For example, if you have somebody at a distance with a knife, it's not threatening you with it yet, and you have your firearm out to protect yourself, you're gonna give that person a warning what to do and tell them what's gonna happen if they advance on you. That's, that, that's reasonable as part of our policy. You know, we believe that, you know, if, if we, we continually try to engage our community regarding different aspects of police work. If you, if I would have come to the community a month ago and said, hey, I wanna have the community forum and I wanna talk about bias training and I wanna talk about use of force training, I probably would have had a dozen people show up. But go out on a limb and say if we held that tonight, we would probably have a little more than a few, we're gonna pack the house. So way, the way your police department and the way I look at this is, a silver lining to a tragedy is that we get the opportunity to communicate with the public what it is we do and why we do it. Because we know that so many of the misperceptions regarding law enforcement and law enforcement services in not just our community, but other communities is people don't understand. And this is an excellent opportunity that we have to seize to have this discussion with the community. And I think when this discussion is over with, I think it's gonna lead to an increase in community trust in this matter, which I think, and actually I know is, is very, very important during this difficult time that our country is going through over these issues. And as City Manager Woodhouse has stated in earlier news communication as well as in emails to council, I am here and I'm willing to have this conversation with anybody that's willing to listen, who wants to sit down and talk to me. Your police department is transparent. We have nothing to hide. Let's talk about and let's show you what we do, why we do it, and see if you agree with it or not. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
Thanks, Chief. Thanks for coming in, in the time with us.
Thank you. It's my pleasure.
Kevin, I wanted to ask you when we're gonna have on the agenda the parking permit plan from, from the resource center on House Task Force? Because we keep hearing about it, but I have never seen it. And I was just wondering when that's gonna be coming to council.
Well, at the next city council meeting, there's gonna be an agenda item to talk about the next several months of council agendas. Given that we're in a Zoom virtual environment, but verbal comment is allowed. And as you recall, the council had directed that hot topic items, we're gonna wait until we had in-person meetings back. But I'd like, given that it's stretching on, I'd like to, to revisit the schedule and the timelines that are ticking and the, and the permit parking program and the implementation of the oversized vehicle ordinance is, is one of the hot topics with the timeline ticking on it to, to, you know, have council discuss the priorities and, and the timeline. I think that staff could be ready as early as the first meeting in July to bring that program forward to the council.
Okay, thank you.
I, I wanted to just, before we, before we leave the, the policing thing, I, I mentioned that, you know, several communications we've done last, last week and connect with Pacifica, talked about the upcoming protest that was last Saturday. We've put out a communication today with announcing, you know, the transparency of police policies that went out on social media today. And I mentioned the the information, more detailed information that we're assembling regarding the police department. So that'll be forthcoming to the council members. I guess, I guess my question, because there's so much community interest i- in this topic is if the, the council members, you know, were interested, wanna give me a head nod to, to put that information out publicly so everyone sees it. I can do that easily. Okay, I'm seeing that. So, so well, I'll get that. We're gonna finish that information up tomorrow and then, and then we'll, we'll get it out.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is that it for staff communications?
Yes.
Okay, great. We will move on to public hearings. Item number twelve is conduct a public hearing and adopt resolution confirming the annual report from the Pacifica Hotel Business Improvement District approving the program of expenditures and assessing the levy for fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one at the same rates levied in fiscal year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty without change. So there will be a staff report.
Good evening, Mayor Martin and Mayor Pro Tim Beckmeyer and members of the Pacifica City Council. My name is Lorenzo Heinz, your Assistant City Manager. I'm here tonight to present the staff report for this particular public hearing. Our subject is, I'll repeat what the mayor said, is we wanna conduct a public hearing and adopt a resolution confirming the annual report from the Pacifica Hotel Business Improvement District, approving the program of expenditures and assessing the levy for fiscal year twenty twenty-one at the same rates levied in the prior fiscal year twenty nineteen, twenty without change. So our recommendation tonight is that we first conduct the public hearing. Second, rule on oral or written protest, if any. Adopt the resolution confirming the annual report of the Pacifica, Pacifica Hotel Business Improvement District. The advisory board of the district and continuing the assessments levied in twenty nineteen, twenty without change in the new fiscal year. So the attached Pacifica Hotel Business Improvement District report was filed with the city clerk as required by California Streets and Highway Code, Section thirty-six, five, three, three. The report was prepared by the Chamber of Commerce, the Pacifica Chamber of Commerce, acting as the managing agency for the hotels in the bid and, and on behalf of the Pacifica Hotel Bid Advisory Committee. Of a resolution of intention to continue the bid program and levy the, the annual assessment for fiscal year twenty twenty-one passed five zero at the May twenty-six, twenty twenty, city council meeting. This action kept the fiscal year twenty twenty, I'm sorry, fiscal year twenty twenty-one levy rate at the same level as the prior year of twenty nineteen, twenty. The public hearing was set at that city council meeting for tonight. Written and oral protest to the levy and of the annual assessment may be made at the public hearing in form and manner prescribed in the state code. And so the chamber, just a little background on the report, the Chamber of Commerce reports a fund balance of nineteen thousand seven hundred sixty-three dollars remaining in the previous year's bid assessment. The expected revenue for this, the remaining months of this fiscal year ranged between fifty-five thousand and fifty-nine thousand. The total cost of planned activity described in the report are about fifty-three thousand. And the city, by the way, collects no administration fee. The bid intends, their activities for next year are to continue the tours that host travel agents and expedients, travel media and, and the folks of that folks of that ilk, the travel skills group, they will also be reaching out to journalists. And will need accommodations for those journalists, various office expenses, postage, special events, miscellaneous advertising, updating the visitor's guide and updating their website, the Pacifica website. So that's what the plan is for next year. And so we merely ask that the council open the public hearing and also rule on any oral or written protest and adopt the resolution as attached to the sign.
Okay, great. Do we have any comments from council before I open the public hearing? Mayor Pro Tim Beckmeyer?
I don't recall honestly if I made this comment at the time that we heard this item prior to tonight. But I do wanna state that while I think right now with our hotel occupancy, last time I checked was at ten percent relative to what we usually see. Now is not the time. But I do strongly believe that we need to consider increasing this bid in the future. This is a potential opportunity for us to expand our outreach efforts, to expand the work that the chamber does, the work that the hoteliers are able to do. And I don't, when, when we're in normal times, not now, but normal times, I really do not think increasing the bid by a dollar is going to impact overall visitorship to Pacifica. So I intend to, you know, study this, bring this back in a year, whenever it is we talk about it again. And I totally respect and understand the reasoning now. But I really do think we need to look at it a little from a different lens, let's say, in the future. That's all.
Thank you. Okay, any other comments from council? Mike O'Neil?
Um, question, Lorenzo. Are we still maintaining our membership to San Mateo County Convention Visitors Bureau?
Yes.
Okay, good. Because I do know they, on their website, they take reservations for Pacifica Hotels. Okay, thank you.
Okay, I will open the public hearing. I do not see any hands raised. Now would be the time to do so. If you want to make a comment on item number twelve. Okay, seeing no hands, I will close public hearing and come back to council. If there are no comments, I will entertain a motion.
Mayor Martin, I just wanted to jump in to state that the city has received no written comments or opposition to this item either.
Thank you, Court Coffee. Um, let's see, do I have any hands raised here? No?
I will have a motion.
Okay, Councilmember Beer?
So I move to adopt the resolution confirming the annual report of the Pacifica Hotel Business Improvement District Advisory Board and continuing the assessment levied in two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty without change in fiscal year two thousand twenty, twenty-one.
Second.
A motion by Councilmember Beer, seconded by Councilmember O'Neil. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember O'Neil?
Yes.
Councilmember Beer?
Yes.
Councilmember Vatilows?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Beckmeyer?
Yes.
Mayor Martin?
Yes.
And item number twelve passes with a unanimous, unanimous vote of five to zero.
Okay, great. We will move on to item number thirteen, a resolution of the city council, the city of Pacifica, adopting the city of Pacifica twenty twenty, twenty twenty-five capital improvement program. Uh, we will have a staff presentation.
Great. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim and city council members. My name is Sam Bautista, your Deputy Director of Public Works for Engineering and Field Services. And the item before you tonight is the Capital Improvement Program, also known as the CIP for fiscal years twenty twenty through twenty twenty five. Tonight, we have Deputy Director Louis Sun and Senior Civil Engineer Ray Dung Guinness, also um Associate Civil Engineer Ryan Marquez to also present or answer any of your CIP questions. Uh, next slide, please. So this slide just shows what uh our pre-presentation um overview, what what the CIP is about. An overall picture of the entire program. Um, and then we're going to give you some highlighted projects for the next year and then, if there are any questions, next slide, please. So what is the CIP? Well, the CIP is a tool for staff to plan and budget public works and um various other projects for the next five years. It um pretty much indicates where these projects were to be located, the scope of the project, how big it is um schedule-wise, um whether it's a multi-year project. It identifies the different funding sources and it also gives you a status of what's going on with that project. Um, the CIP um is state mandated so that the city could collect development fees for projects listed within the CIP. And for the fiscal year twenty uh twenty 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 one, proposed CIP um is uh fifty-nine projects totaling um fourteen point eight million dollars. Next part, uh, next slide, please. So um, this is the overall picture of our five-year CIP. Um, we have um approximately two hundred sixty-seven million dollars worth of projects that equates to um about one hundred twenty-eight projects. And as you can see, we have a various projects from coastal protection to um facilities, to personal wreck projects, streets, utilities. So as you can see, that the facilities is a a big portion of the overall picture at um forty-five percent, but that's because um within the CIP, we project uh large projects such as a library, um, the um fire stations and like parking facilities are within uh the category of facilities. Uh, next bit, our slide, please. So the next couple of slides um are the highlighted projects for field services in the engineering division. So in the next year, we uh intend to, you know, work uh continuing to work on the Beach um Boulevard Plaza, hoping to um activate the space on the su- southern part of Beach Boulevard. Um, we are going to be working on the Beach Boulevard Seawall Replacement Project where um we received the one point five million dollar uh grant from um the state. Um, the next one is going to be an interesting project, the Urban Forest Land and Vegetation Management Plan, which um we're going to be looking at our tree ordinances and our tree program. Um, we do intend to have a um pavement rehabilitation and floor refill project next year. And we also intend on um updating our storm drain master plan because it hasn't been updated in quite some time. So uh, we'd like to update uh the plan. Next slide, please. Um, so in terms of facilities, uh, we are going to um upgrade the lighting at the um police station visitor lot and do a pathway improvement by putting in a ramp. Um, we intend to also uh, you know, look at um the playgrounds and um replace the equip- equipment at these playgrounds. Um, we're going to uh construct a fitness court at um Frontier Land Park. Um, and then, of course, we do have our infrastructure preservation project at uh three uh three ten and four hundred Espinade. And of course, um, we also listed the new uh Pacifica Library. Um, the next couple of slides, uh Deputy Director um Louis Sun will be presenting those those slides.
Thank you, Deputy Director Bautista. Um, good evening, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim and City Council Members. Uh, this is Louis Sun, your Deputy Director of Public Works for Wastewater. I'm just gonna walk you through some of the highlighted projects for Wastewater Division. Uh, obviously, number one on our list is the Balboa Way Repair Project. Um, this project was awarded during the last uh council meeting and we will be having our kickoff meeting this Wednesday. So um, and we'll determine when we'll proceed with construction. So there'll be more update uh coming to you uh on this project. Uh, our second important, most important project for this fiscal year will be the Emergency Anza Pump Station Repair Project. Um, this project is um currently in design and we also working on uh putting um the engines and also repairs some of the pumps. So we want to get this um pump station operational uh when the rain season starts. Um, other projects, notable projects are our ultraviolet disinfection system upgrade. Um, also, we're also looking at uh process optimization pro- uh which is um really the granular sludge technology. We wanted to um explore that. Um, that has a potential to uh save a lot of energy costs for the wastewater treatment plant. And also, we're gonna start the sewerage study for fiscal year twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-seven. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, continue with our highlighted project. Um, also, we discussed that last uh council meeting is our uh photovoltaic system improvement project. Um, that will be underway very shortly. Also, the uh collection system project, Gypsy Hill. Uh, this project will be um uh out of, uh, it's currently out for a bid and we will have a bid opening next Thursday. And next project is Lindemar Pump Station Upgrade Project. Uh, thank you, council, for approving Friar and Larreras' um agreement this evening. Uh, we will be getting started. This project will be upgrading the uh electrical system, also um the MCC control panels for the pump station. Um, next project will be the Sharp Park Pump Station Facility Improvement Project. Uh, this project is to improve the odor control uh system for a Sharp Park Pump Station. And lastly, our digester project, the ATAD modification phase three. Um, again, ATAD is, uh, it stands for Auto Thermothermophilic Aerobic Digestion. And we've been doing this project uh for the last couple of years now. It's um, it's a continuation of improving uh the digesters and it would improve also odor odor control uh at the wastewater treatment plant. And with that, I believe that is um the last slide. Um, so staff would recommend that city council adopt the resolution to adopt the city of Pacifica twenty 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 twenty-five capital improvement program after closing the public hearing. Uh, with that, uh, we are available to answer any of your questions. Next slide, please.
Mike O'Neil?
Yeah, I just wanted to tell for members of the public that this is something that we've discussed at a couple other council meetings. So it's um that's why there's really not a lot of questions from council. It's been discussed several times before, just so people don't think, you know, we ignored this.
Any other questions? Before I open the public hearing? Nope. Okay. I will open the public hearing and I don't see any hands raised. So with that, I will close the public hearing and come back to council uh for discussion or a motion. Um, looking for a raised hand and so I can entertain.
I move that we uh accept the and approve the capital improvement program.
All right. Thank you, Mike. Do I have a second?
A second.
Okay, um, motion made by Councilmember O'Neil, seconded by Mayor Pro Tim Beckmeyer. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember O'Neil?
Yes.
Councilmember Beer?
Yes.
Councilmember Vatterlaus?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Beckmeyer?
Yes.
Mayor Martin?
Yes.
And item number thirteen passes with a unanimous vote of five to zero.
Great, thank you. And thank you, uh, Sam and Louis. We will move on to item number fourteen. Uh, public hearing to consider recommend the recommended modifications to fees and charges, schedule and administrative policy number two. Uh, is that Assistant City Manager Lorenzo Heinz?
Yes, it is.
Good to see you.
Good to see you too. Mayor Martin and Mayor Pro Tim Beckmeyer, I'm Lorenzo Heinz, your Assistant City Manager, and I also uh, uh, the remainder of the Pacifica City Council, I'm your your Assistant City Manager Lorenzo Heinz. Uh, we're here tonight to um adopt a resolution approving and increasing certain user fees and charges as described in in the city administrative policy number two. And um, as you know, or as um, as as is our custom, uh, the city adopts our master fee schedule on an annual basis. Um, the fees come in many different um sizes and and types. Uh, the, we have flat dollar amount fees, which are typically used for recreational classes. We have fees based on the amount of time um on the service uh such as development review. Uh, we use an hourly rate, which we increase every year. Um, our cost, our cost allocation plan and fee study was developed in twenty thirteen and it helped uh helped us determine the appropriate hourly rate and has been used as the baseline uh for our fee budgets um since twenty thirteen. For twenty twenty-one, uh, we're proposing to increase the hourly rates and fees by the um change in the CPI of two point nine percent. This that that was measured as of February twenty twenty. And or if it's not the CPI, it'll be the construction cost index and that rate is to be determined. Um, if deemed appropriate, these these increases are a- again, up to the department administering the fees. Uh, some departments will choose to keep fees at a certain level um based on market conditions and some departments will accept the changes as uh as we propose them. Um, and given that, some fees and charges are staying the same as uh they were in uh twenty nineteen, twenty twenty and others have decreased. And the proposed changes that you see here in the uh fee schedule, um, some of the increases of note include an online convenience fee. Um, the city is now able to take payments for various services online. However, the convenience fee will be three dollars per transaction. There'll also be uh for the Rockaway Beach Specific Plan Parking and Lou and the Sharp Part Specific Plan Parking and Lou. Uh, both of these fees were approved by council previously, but they are, uh, because they are fees, they have to uh appear in the uh master fee schedule. The unlawful parking of oversized vehicle, um, we're establishing a fee of seventy-eight dollars per infraction. And also, the cannabis operation, uh, owner-operator background live scan and and consultant that's also being established, uh, that fee is also being established at three hundred and thirty uh dollars. And so um, that concludes my report tonight. And if there's any questions about fees, um, we're here to uh answer those questions.
Anyone on council have any questions?
No.
Everything looks good to me, Lorenzo.
Okay, so I guess we will open the public hearing?
Yeah, I don't see any, um, I will open the public hearing. I don't see any hands raised now. So I will close the public hearing and bring it back to council for discussion or a motion.
I move that we accept the schedules and fee changes for two two thousand twenty.
A second.
Okay, um, motion by Councilmember O'Neil, seconded by Mayor Pro Tim Beckmeyer. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember O'Neil?
Yes.
Councilmember Beer?
Yes.
Councilmember Vatterlaus?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Beckmeyer?
Yes.
Mayor Martin?
Yes.
And that item number fourteen passes unanimously five to zero.
Thank you, Lorenzo.
My pleasure.
You're Lorenzo.
Okay, let's move on to uh item for consideration, consideration of adopting of of an urgency ordinance establishing a temporary moratorium on commercial tenant evictions for non-payment of rent for tenants impacted by the COVID-nineteen pandemic in the city of Pacifica.
Yes, thank you, um, Madam Mayor. Um, I will take the lead on this and this is the consideration of an urgency ordinance, which is actually intended to extend uh our temporary moratorium on commercial tenant evictions which expired on May thirty-first due to the fact that the governor um had only allowed his suspension of preemption concerns until May thirty-first. The governor on May uh twenty ninth um issued an executive order which extended that um um the ability to regulate commercial um evictions through July twenty eighth. This ordinance basically extends our prior um temporary moratorium until July twenty eighth. Um, the key terms in the the um ordinance are essentially this, they are exactly the same as before and they require, that prohibit the property owner from recovering possession of the commercial property for failures to pay rent so long as the tenant demonstrates that the failures to pay rent is due to COVID-related issues. Um, the property owners must also provide the tenant's notice of this urgency ordinance. Um, the tenants um must demonstrate that COVID nexus um by providing documentation to the property owner. Um, this applies to businesses with gross receipts of two point five million dollars or less. Um, and that's consistent with the county's uh commercial moratorium ordinance. And it also authorizes commercial tenants to use the provisions of the urgency ordinance as an affirmative defense in any future unlawful detainer action. Um, it does give tenants the ability to pay back rent up to ninety days after the expiration of the termination of the urgency ordinance, which if approved tonight would be July twenty eighth. Um, and it does not relieve the tenant from liability for back rent. It just allows a delayed payment period to pay the back rent and precludes eviction. And I'm here to answer any questions if you have any. Oh, and I should note that the, since it is an urgency ordinance, it does require a four-fifth vote of the council.
Roger that. Okay, are there any questions, Council Mary?
And yeah, Michelle, did you say that that they only have till July twenty eighth to pay the rent back?
No, no, no. July twenty eighth is the expiration date of this temporary urgency ordinance.
Okay, good.
And it's the expiration date of the governor's current order, which extends his prior order till July twenty eighth.
Okay, so it just depends on.
The tenants will still have ninety days after July twenty eighth to pay back the rent.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, um, it's clear to me. Uh, any, uh, any other members of the council have any? Um, see, if we have any public comments on this item, I don't see any hands raised. Now would be the time. So I will close public comments and come back to council. We have a proposed action for adoption, and we will need to vote on this. So Councilmember Vado Lous?
I make the motion that we consider adoption by a forfeits vote, an urgency ordinance establishing a temporary moratorium on commercial tenant evictions for non-payment of rent for tenants impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic in the city of Pacifica. And do I have to say extended until July 28th? 2020.
A second. Okay, so we have a motion from Councilmember Vado Lous and a second from Councilmember Beer. Can I have a poll vote, please?
Councilmember O'Neil.
Yes.
Councilmember Beer.
Yes.
Councilmember Vado Lous.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Beckmeyer.
Yes.
Mayor Martin.
Yes.
And item number 15 passes unanimously with a vote of five to zero.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, great. Well, thanks, City Attorney. We will move on to the final presentation of proposed 2020, 2021 general fund budget. I believe there's a PowerPoint and City Manager?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Martin, Mayor Pro Tem Beckmeyer, and council members. I'm going to make, kick it off just with some very general comments and thank yous at the beginning of this, and then turn it over to Assistant City Manager Hines to step through the presentation. You have before you the proposed budget for next fiscal year, which, based on the input tonight, will bring back for formal adoption at the June 22nd meeting. I want to really extend my thank you to Assistant City Manager Hines and the finance staff and all of the department directors for really working hard during a difficult time to be preparing a budget. And a lot of challenges with our financial condition. But what I'm exceptionally proud about, and recently as I was out sort of in the virtual environment, as well as in person, talking with all of the employees, I told them this, that, you know, we have some financial challenges, but this budget includes a significant amount of great stuff. We just heard the presentation on the CIP and the projects that are included in that. And we are for now able to balance this budget with with minimal expenditure reductions and that don't really represent significant service reductions to the citizens, as well as honor our MOU obligations to the employees in this difficult time. So so that's impressive, I think. And as you know, one of the strategies is we need to monitor this recession that we're in and do a deep dive mid-year and and come back about our revenue projections, but I I'm just pleased to be able to have gone through a budget process, slightly abbreviated, but still a complete budget process while we're in, you know, shelter in place and focused on essential services and carry this forward so that we can look ahead and and plan for the exciting things we have yet to come. So that's all I wanted to comment on and turn it over to Assistant City Manager Hines.
All right. Well, good evening once again, Mayor Martin, Mayor Pro Tem Beckmeyer, and members of the Pacifica City Council. I'm your Assistant City Manager Lorenzo Hines, Jr., and we're gonna go through the 2020, 21 budget. For a final review, we'll be coming back to you on June 22nd for final adoption. But we'll have another, you know, we'll have another opportunity to look at it tonight. And so Sarah, if I could have the next slide, please? So we first want to start with with the activities of the current year. Because of the pandemic, it's wreaked havoc on our revenues, and we've had to make some adjustments. And so because of the pandemic, we found ourselves with a projected year-end budget deficit for 2019, 20 of almost 1.5 million. And so we were able to find savings in the Planning Department, General Government, and Public Works to offset the majority of those, to offset the majority of that deficit. And we were also utilizing childcare reserves and utilizing undesignated fund balance for the balance of that deficit that still remains. We will be monitoring our year-end expenditures, so the actual amount of the undesignated fund balance may vary depending on how the actuals come out, but for right now, this is my best estimate as to how much we're going to actually use. Next slide, please. And by the way, if you have questions, you know my, you know my, my motto, this is a conversation. And so the next slide demonstrates or shows you our budget story from the adopted budget of 2019, 20 through the mid-year and through the COVID-impacted budget and into the proposed budget for 2020 and 21. As you can see, we are balanced in the COVID, the COVID-impacted budget, and you just saw in the prior slide how we balanced it. And for the 2020, 21 budget, we are also balanced, and we're going to talk a little bit about that budget now. Next slide, please. So we use a number of strategies to balance the 2021 budget. First of all, there's the reserve policy where we utilize reserves as part of the overall strategy to balance a portion of the current year general fund budget and a portion of the budget year general fund budget. We also utilize the excess ERAF dollars and use a portion of that to as part of the overall strategy to balance the the budget year budget. We're also anticipating a very comprehensive mid-year budget assessment. We've already scheduled it for January 11th, 2021. We're also looking, we looked at, took a good hard look at our cannabis revenues, took a good look, good hard look at the the annual licensing fee, the public safety license, and some of the retailers that we expect to come online, and so we feel comfortable increasing the revenues, the projected revenues due to cannabis to $500,000 for the budget year. And next slide, please. We're also, even though this isn't reflected in the budget year budget, we also wanted to make sure that the public understood and knew that we that we contributed to SMC Strong. The city contributed $50,000 for the benefit of our businesses here in the city of Pacifica. Another one of the strategies that we use was to defer, we deferred our vehicle replacement funding. On an annual basis, the general fund pays Fund 72 a certain amount of dollars every year as sort of a savings account for the replacement of vehicles. We've decided to defer that this year and use those extra dollars as far as savings are concerned. Also, we're looking at hiring freezes and reclassifications. So we've got a we've got a, not a hard freeze going on right now, but we do have a sort of a I'll call it a moderate freeze, and basically any new positions or any refilling of positions have to come through me and the HR manager, and we will then determine with the department if it's essential, if it can be held open. And because we, you know, we really, you know, we have to really think about whether or not those savings would be more beneficial. If that, we have to think about if that position would be more beneficial budgetarily vacant, and especially if it doesn't affect our programmatic operations. We also looked at a 1% reduction, and we implemented a 1% reduction as well, and that also helped us balance in the budget year. And as federal and state relief dollars come and become available for the coronavirus impacts, we will be aggressively seeking reimbursement. We, as you noticed in the RUP report that we presented to you last council meeting, we've we've already calculated how much the the COVID impact is at that particular point in time, and so we'll always keep that tally going. Next slide, please. And so the strategies that I just laid out to you, what we've done here is presented them in a sort of a quantitative fashion. And with the first group, the use of the undesignated fund balance, we started with a fund balance of 6.679 million. And that includes all the adjustments that we needed to make this year in order to balance. And by the end of all of the things that we need to do as far as replenishing the legal reserve, using some of these dollars for the operational budget for 2021, and making sure that we have enough dollars to increase our 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 general fund reserves. The, at the, sort of the final result of all of those moves will bring the general fund balance from 6.6 down to 4.4. So we still have 4.4 million available for whatever contingencies happen in the budget year and thereafter. The second category is the use of the ERAF dollars, and so right now we're we're using 314,000 will be transferred into the operating budget to help support it. And we're also going to use another 88,000 to support the nongovernmental organizations that we we provide funding to every every year. The next slide, please. As I mentioned, we're anticipating a comprehensive mid-year review, and we also reflect the cannabis business program revenues and the increase in those revenues, economic stimulus through SMC Strong, which we've already approved, and we've already sent them the check, and and we've also deferring our vehicle maintenance, which gets us about $233,000 toward budget savings and our hiring freeze. We haven't quantified that. And the reductions in operating budgets. So some of the reductions in operating budgets, the 1%, include some freezing of positions. Or, and so we're not talking about never filling it, but but we're talking about perhaps putting, delaying hiring in that position if it's programmatically feasible by six or seven months. And so that yields 349,000 toward budget, our budgetary savings. Next slide, please. And so what we're going to do now is just quickly go through each of the departments. We've already seen this slide before, but I just wanted to make sure you had a final looksee at it. So with general government, the baseline is 4.234 million. There are a lot of things that we are, that we built into the budget for this year. I already can tell you, I've already can tell you that there is a $10,000 savings here because I was able to talk to folks that run the priority-based budgeting. We set aside $30,000, which you see here in the third line. They informed me that they'll be able to do that for $20,000. So that's, that's good news, and and so we're happy about that. We're also continuing the document management system, our Vision 2025 program, our policy development, and in HR, labor legal expense, we will be heading to labor negotiations with at least seven of our eight bargaining units starting in January of 2021. We've got $7,000 for the EDC budget. We're anticipating additional election costs of $90,000. There's also the sustainability, staffing, and the general fund 1% reduction as as it's applied to general government. And that gets us to 4.718 million as the budget figure for this year. Next slide, please. Pacifica Police Department, no significant programmatic changes this year. Their baseline is 10.369 million. They participated in the 1% reduction, and we also deferred their vehicle replacement dollars, and so their budget now sits at 10.175 million. Next slide, please. North County Fire, once again, no significant changes in programmatic activity. Baseline of 6.322 million. We kept the overtime dollars in their budget that we added last year. Those dollars are being funded with one-time dollars. They participated in the general fund 1% reduction. We deferred their vehicles, and so their budget now sits at 6.392 million. Next slide, please. Parks and Rec, baseline of 5.44. Again, no major changes programmatically. Baseline of 5.144 million. They participated in the 1% reduction and the deferment of the vehicles, and so their budget is 5082292.
Lorenzo, just to clarify, the CC is Child Care, not City Council Reserve?
Right.
Yeah, okay, just want sure that people don't know we don't have a slush fund in the city council or something.
No, we don't. And and hopefully I'll like to point out that every, to everyone, that that row is blank. So, but yeah, CC would mean Child Care Reserve. And next slide, please. And so the next department is our Planning Department, and baseline of 2.694 and 95 million. There is a whole host of projects that are being planned in the Planning Department this year. Some of them are funded by offsetting revenues, and some of them are funded by grants, and some of them are funded by planning fees that sit in the general fund. And there's a very impressive list here, and so we go from a baseline of 2.7 million up to the final budget of 3.771 million. Next slide, please. Public Works, baseline of 4.143 million. Again, a host of projects that the Public Works team is working on. Tree maintenance, they want to purchase a Bobcat with attachments. There's a document scanning effort that's going on, and that document scanning effort is probably going to go on citywide. And so we've got to figure out some way to consolidate all of the funding for that particular project. Public Works contributed in the 1% reduction and also deferred their vehicle replacement. And I forgot to mention, our Planning Department also participated in the 1% reduction and also participated in the deferment of vehicle replacement as well. And so getting back to Public Works, their final budget is 4.389 million. Next slide, please. And so we have two other departments, non-departmental, which are basically, I like to call that all the expenditures that don't have a home, such as our animal shelter. The annual bill that we pay for the San Mateo Animal Shelter, that comes out of non-departmental. The funding for the nongovernmental organizations, that also comes out of non-departmental. Our workers' comp premiums come out of non-departmental, so that's that's sort of a quick snapshot of what that, what that department does. And then we have our transfers out, and these, the majority of these dollars are for debt service and for all of the various loans and things that the general fund owes as far as debt is concerned. Next slide. And so now we'll touch on some of the other funds, and so the general fund budget is roughly 37 million. The other fund's budget is 36 million, and so that gets us to about 73 million. And with a total, that's our total budget. Wastewater, for the proposed 2020, 2021, the expenditure total for Fund 18, which is their operations fund, will be about 18.7 million. And we expect to make all of that back in revenue, and so the sort of the cost recovery will be at 100%. The expenditures, as you can see here, are for plant operations, collection system, transfer to Fund 34, which we'll go through in a second, for capital projects, and their debt service as well. Next slide, please. And so as we move to Fund 34, whereas Fund 18 is for operations, Fund 34 is to fund the capital projects that Wastewater has to. Fund thirty four is to fund the capital projects that Wastewater has to. Embark on in order to keep that very impressive facility going. And so if you look at the twenty twenty, twenty twenty one column, you'll see that the capital projects scheduled for this year. Are four point one million. And that four point one million was transferred over from Fund eighteen and supported by the revenues of Fund eighteen. The the uh Wastewater team is planning to. Perform capital projects or uh embark on capital projects at the plant. Um we are done with the wet weather equalization basin, I left that in there just so you all could see that we're done. Um the repair, rehab and replacement projects. Uh there's also capacity improvement projects. I also left the lateral grant assistance project in there, just so you can see that that project um still continues. I know that that's a sensitive and uh very valuable program. To to the citizens and I just wanted to make sure everybody saw that it was funded. There's also um other collections projects and there's some miscellaneous projects too. And so that's um the Wastewater budget. And the dollars that have been, the dollars that are owed from the general fund. To the Wastewater Enterprise are included in the revenue stream uh for Fund eighteen. Next slide, please. Another one of our other funds is the supplemental law enforcement services fund, which is Fund seven. And so our anticipated expenditures for this year. Uh include a part-time community service officer, I I think there's, I think there's two. Uh part-time community service officers at sixty seven, five hundred. Um and also equipment and training, uh two hundred twenty nine thousand, so our expenditures this year. Or I'm sorry, our expenditures for the budget year will total two hundred and ninety seven thousand dollars. Can we have uh can I have the next slide, please? And so the fund balance for Fund seven, as you can see, will begin with a fund balance in twenty twenty, twenty twenty one of two hundred and sixty four thousand. Um we will, we project uh that we'll receive revenues of a hundred thousand. Um you already saw how we're going to spend that two hundred ninety seven thousand. And so we anticipate having enough in the fund balance to continue those two part-time community services, uh community service officers.
Lorenzo, I have a question on this, what is the source of the supplemental? Funds?
I believe it's a state program, um and it says it's a state appropriation, but Chief Stidle can give you a little more detail. And yeah.
Yes, I'm happy to answer that, yes, it is, it is from the state. Um the supplemental law enforcement services account is is guaranteed by the California State Constitution. Um our share of that is a hundred thousand dollars every year. It's to be used for frontline law enforcement services. It is um distributed, it is sent to the county and then it's distributed to San Mateo Law Enforcement uh agencies uh via the county.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thanks to you, Stidle. Uh next slide, please. Fund twenty seven, which is the Roy Davies Trust Fund. And so we're we're anticipating that the fund balance for this particular fund will be around three million at the end of this year. So the funds in this fund balance are, it is a trust fund, as I mentioned. And these funds are to be used to support the infrastructure and parks, beaches and recreation areas located in Pacifica. These expenditures uh that come from these funds have to be appropriated by a four-fifths council vote. For twenty twenty one, staff is proposing the following projects. And there is a play and and you actually saw some of these projects in the prior presentation for the C I P. So there's playground equipment improvement of three hundred thirty thousand. Edsmar Park Upgrade, sixty thousand, of the installation of the fitness courts of a hundred and sixty thousand. And then we've got the Beach Boulevard Park Plaza, uh which is an existing project of uh that should be fifty thousand. Uh next pro- the next uh slide, please. And so the next fund we wanted to show you is the Parking Enterprise Fund, which is uh the the uh fund that is used to. Uh support the operations of our 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 uh paid parking areas. And so for this year, we're expecting uh or for the budget year, we're expecting revenues of five hundred and forty thousand dollars. Um we're expecting expenditures of five hundred and thirty four thousand dollars. And so for the budget year, we are balanced. What we are, what we are looking at, however, in the current year, because of the closure of the beach parking lots. We're anticipating a deficit occurring in the current year and we're still working on quantifying that. But that deficit will affect the fund balance and um we hope not too detrimentally. So that'll, we hope to have a clearer picture on that when we bring this back to you on um June twenty, uh June twenty second. Next slide, please. And so here we are, we started way back on April twenty seventh. Um where we had our first study session, um where we presented the narrative budget. May fourth, the C I P actually went to the Planning Commission for consistency determination. May eleventh, we presented the uh draft budget. And uh May twenty sixth, we came back and presented um any budget updates and also a discussion of the other funds. And here we are on June eighth with our public hearings for C I P and the capital budget. And uh the fee schedule and so those went well. And uh and we are about to conclude the final presentation of the twenty twenty one budget. We will come back um on June twenty second um with the adoption of the annual operating budget. And um. And so we'll look forward to that. Uh next slide, please. And if there are any questions, um we can um entertain those now.
Okay, great. Any questions from council members?
Lorenzo, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
Okay. Question Lorenzo, okay, regarding the next item is the pension obligation bond. And I know that's in the nineteen twenty budget and we're actually gonna be adopting the twenty twenty one budget. But you did reference how we balance the nineteen twenty budget, right? And my my concern is with, you know, by transferring the two hundred thousand. To the pension up to the one, one, five trust.
Yeah, section fif- section one fifteen trust, yes.
Right, okay, we're taking and um using some money already to balance the budget from reserves, et cetera. To balance this year's budget for nineteen twenty, okay?
Right.
And I don't quite understand the logic. Of using our reserves to fund. The one fif- the section one fifteen trust. When we're really severely restricting our use of the two hundred thousand dollars when it goes into the trust.
Right.
We had the resources um to balance it out as an even, but we don't. Do you follow what I'm saying?
Yeah, I follow what you're saying, um so let me respond to that. The first thing that I wanted to to say is um these pension, it's uh these pension obligations. They are in stone. And there's no getting away from them, there's no deferring them. Um I've been on a conference call with Calpers. And they made it clear, COVID or no COVID. Um these bills are still due. And so I think putting those dollars away in the section one fifteen trust is still our best. Um is still a good move. Um if anything, if we get into a situation where things get tight. We can always use that two hundred thousand dollars to pay the current year's. Pension expenditures. As long as they, as long as it's used for pension expenditures, we're okay. But if we get into a pinch in twenty twenty-two, twenty-three. And we're not able to set aside ongoing revenue to take care of that. We can dip into this trust and have that trust pay for. The pension expenses for that particular year or some of the pension expenses for that particular year.
Okay, now, I realize these are all set in stone and the dismal investment returns Calpers is producing. For us and I understand the benefits if we had, you know, if we had been putting the E R A F money into the section one fifteen trust. That would be great because we could even it out versus the peaks. So far, it's only peaks or hasn't been any valleys in our pension obligation funds. But I just don't quite, and so basically what you're saying is. You wanna put the two hundred thousand in from our reserves this year. Okay, just wanted to kind of emphasize that. To put it into an account almost for a college fund. And but then if you win Lotto on the way to pay the college for the money for the college, you still would pull this money out, right? I mean, you're basically looking at reserving this money only for the pension obligation funds. While not allowing the council to keep that money in reserves to fund general fund obligations down the road. Because, am I correct in in that? We have to pay a minimum contribution every year of the current amount due. But the unfunded liability can keep just being down there, correct?
Yes. Yes, so. Now, you mentioned earlier about the general fund. Expenditures, well. You know. Some of those general fund expenditures are pension expense.
Correct, yeah.
And that, uh you know, when it gets down to brass tacks, the two expenses that we have to pay. Are debt service and pensions.
Right.
Those are the two, you know, if I gotta rank them, those are the two. And debt service is number one. And the pensions is number two. And so what this does is gives us a hedge. Um allows us to put these dollars away. Into a into a section one fifteen trust, which is interest-bearing, by the way. And. To help us support some expenditures that we're going to have to pay. Irregardless of our financial situation.
Well, kind of, you know, going back to an Al, what Al Gore said, that social security is a strong, is a lockbox. Or strong box, that's what you're doing, is taking the money out of the reserves, where we could use it for discretionary spending. Down the road as we continue this journey and you're putting them in a lockbox. So that we could then use this two hundred thousand dollars. At a later date just to make the current amount due. From the the current payroll amount due for the um thing. So you're just putting the money in a lockbox, correct?
Right, right. And forgive my smile, I just, I just, uh uh an old Saturday Night Live skit just popped into my head. And Al Gore and so. So yeah, so putting this away allows us to have those dollars available for future pension costs. You know, it could be two years from now, it could be ten years from now. But the thing is, we have to start. We have to start um acknowledging that that unfunded that you just brought up. That that will continue to grow and we have to feel, figure out a way, we're acknowledging the fact that we know that it's growing. And we're putting dollars away for uh to address it. And that's, it's a prudent move and and this is why the council approved it with the nineteen twenty budget. Um and we we hope to get it in place um here before the end of this fiscal year.
Right, but it, when we. I understand the concept, but I just want to emphasize.
Right.
When we approved that into the nineteen twenty budget, the world was a totally different place than it is right today.
Right.
And if we somehow found the money and we totally wiped out our unfunded liability. Because of the investment returns or lack thereof from Calpers. Next year, we could be, have another unfunded liability, correct?
Yeah, I I I truly expect the unfunded liability to keep going up.
Right, and so I'm just, I'm just reconciling. Pulling money out of our savings, we reserve, savings account reserves. And putting them in the lockbox for the pension obligations and that's the part I'm kind of. Reconciling in my own head is to, is removing that flexibility we might have. To keep a cop on the street, a public works employee employed. Uh or, you know, re- repair a seawall for matching funds, which we. Had to address in last year, you know.
Right.
Couple of budget sessions before, is we're removing that flexibility to use that money for matching funds.
Right.
At a later date.
So Mike.
Yeah, go ahead, sorry.
Councilman O'Neill, um I I understand where you're coming from. But when it comes to the hierarchy of the expenditures that we have to pay. We have no flexibility when it comes to debt service and pensions. We have flexibility in all those other areas that you just mentioned. Not to match the grant or accept the grant. The reduced staff or reduced services, we have that discretion. We have no discretion with paying pensions and debt service. They have.
What what we're doing is basically dancing on the head of a pen because. I believe some of those people on Beach Boulevard would say. You don't have the matching funds to repair the seawall and my house is gonna go underwater. You know what I mean and that's.
And I get that, but what we try to do with our budgets. Is strategically design them so it addresses as many needs as possible. And so the budget that you sit, see before you, the twenty twenty, twenty one budget. Allows us to continue to pay ongoing pension costs. Allows us to continue to pay the ongoing debt service costs while providing. All of those additional dollars for the services that you just mentioned. And if there are any matching funds that are needed, there are dollars sitting in Fund thirty-eight in the form of raft dollars. That we have set aside for and the grants that we have anticipated.
But now I know.
Yeah.
The discussion is also coming out of Sacramento, that they're thinking of removing. And using to balance the state's budget, the E R A F funds that we had so heavily depend on.
Right.
So, right now, we have E R A F in a savings account. We've been doing that and putting it away for reserves, but in next year's budget, okay? We're using some of the E R A F money to balance. Next year's budget, the twenty twenty-one budget and that's gonna create a huge hole. If that money is, the E R A F check doesn't arrive, right?
Right, well, the thing is, I'm expecting eight hundred thousand dollars in E R A F to arrive in August. That's what I'm expecting and that's what the county has indicated.
And you're targeting August twenty.
August twenty twenty.
Yeah.
So I know we'll be okay with that amount and so the amounts that I'm proposing in this budget, I I I know will be okay. But the question is what we get in January.
Okay.
And so you'll see that if you compare this budget to prior budgets. You'll see that our proposed use of E R A F is way down. And because we're anticipating that. Now, one of the things that we as a city, you know, cause. Uh City Manager Woodhouse and I have been on calls with other cities and. You know, the the use of E R A F is almost part of their ongoing budgets. And that seems to be the trend out there, whereas Pacifica has has, you know, about three years ago said, no. This, we don't know if these dollars are gonna be ongoing. And they could go away at any time and so we're just funding one-time activities out of these dollars. And since we put that policy in place, we have essentially um weaned ourselves off of. The 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 crutch that E R A F had become. And so when the, when these dollars come in, yes, we'll program them for. Various expenditures, but all of those expenditures are considered one-time and very flexible. Except for the non-governmental organizations.
Okay, well, I just wanted to. Clarify in my head, the the logic. Of removing money from your reserves, the flexibility we have there to put it in a lockbox. Knowing that we can use it for the current obligations and reduce the general fund expenditures. And that's the part I'm just kind of torn and I'd like to hear what the other council members think about it.
Uh I have a question.
Uh, I have a question about, um, your recent experiences. In working on getting our bond ratings increased.
Yes.
Um, does it help in any way? That we have a pension obligation bond set aside?
Yes.
Does that look good, you know, like we're doing our best to, you know? Address the giant unfunded liability?
Yes, a, a thing that, uh, it shows them that the city has a certain level of sophistication. When it comes to anticipating future expenditures.
Right.
We also gain favor by, uh, all the reserves policies that we passed over the past couple of years. And so it shows that the city has the foresight to anticipate, um, contingencies. And that, yeah, and that is the one reason why we are one notch below AAA right now.
I know, yes, I, I, I mean, logic would say that should count, but I didn't know in, in municipal finance if it does.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, when I'm in San Francisco at Standard and Poor's presenting. Um, our, our, our financial picture, yes, that's one of the first things they hear.
It's, uh, nine minutes to eleven.
Okay. And if there are no more questions, this concludes my presentation.
I don't have any questions, um.
Mary, didn't Mary have a question?
Well, I didn't have a question, I don't have one now because Mike brought up the ERAF fund, so I was concerned about that too, because I'm just learning about, you know, the state's plans for that. So I'm sure we're going to be hearing a lot more about that as, as we move forward. And also going to comment, Lorenzo, that I didn't have the opportunity to spend the time with you that I usually do. On the budget, but you must have done a really good job because I actually could follow it, so.
That just means you're becoming, you're, you're a veteran now, so this. Yeah. But, uh, yeah.
Make it easy, though, Lorenzo.
Thank you, thank you. We, we're having a meeting, I think the finance officers and some of the ACMs are having a meeting on June tenth. And we'll be talking about, um, this whole trailer bill situation, and I think. The governor, they, they have to pass that budget here in the next few days. And so we'll find out if our, our efforts to thwart that. Um, have worked. Um, because there was a countywide effort, uh, to push back against that trailer bill.
Please keep us apprised of whatever you learn, thank you.
I will.
Um, per Sue Varelas's recommendation, I was just thinking of making a motion to extend the meeting to eleven thirty. Because there's one, only one other item on the, and most, on the, on the agenda.
Okay, I have a second, can we just vote like that?
In a second.
Yeah, with, uh, a second by, uh, Councilmember Beer.
Yeah.
And, uh, we'll call vote, uh, Councilmember O'Neill.
Yes.
Councilmember Beer.
Yes.
Councilmember Varelas.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Beckmeyer.
Yes.
Mayor Martin.
Yes.
Okay, and that passes to extend the meeting to eleven thirty PM.
Thank you.
So, I want to open the budget item up for any public comments. Now would be the time to raise your hand if you'd like to speak to it. Otherwise, I don't see any hands raised, so I will close public comments. And, um, bring it back to, I think we have consensus to up to the report. We provided feedback, do you feel confident, Assistant City Manager Hines?
Yes, yes, Councilman O'Neill, did I answer your question?
Yes, you did, I just kind of wanted to bring it up.
Okay, okay.
Okay, so we will move on to, thank you, um, Renzo. We'll move on to item number seventeen, and I will ask kindly, um, city manager to, uh. Tell us what that was again.
Yeah, thank you, and this, this, uh, can be quick, I'll, I'll clarify, uh, so at the beginning. Uh, of the meeting, the, the council voted to hear this emergency item on tonight's agenda. And it's, uh, to ratify the emergency order that I made on Friday. Uh, essentially related to, uh, guidelines for outdoor dining in restaurants. In adherence to the county health guidelines, so it's the council's consideration. Of a resolution of the City Council of the City of Pacifica. Ratifying Order Number Twenty Twenty dash zero two. Of the Director of Emergency Services relating to operation of outdoor commercial activity. In the public right-of-way and on private property during period of local emergency due to COVID nineteen. So this is a temporary program to allow restaurants to do outdoor dining. And a series of guidelines, uh, depending on their circumstances. It was designed quickly, and Director Waremeister, uh, will, Planning Director Waremeister will step through. Um, some of the details and guidelines, but it was designed with flexibility in mind for the restaurants. To be able to act immediately, and, and we did get some inquiries over the weekend. Um, and, and then to follow up with, uh, the necessary. Uh, agreement provisions or, or permit requirements with the city. Within, uh, ten days in some circumstances, um, to ensure that they're, you know, meeting the basic public health and safety requirements. And another, other requirements that Director Waremeister will go through. What I want to mention is that, um, that, the one aspect to this. Is, uh, is going to be a, a learning curve on it, so we want to act quickly, we want to get restaurants back into business. Uh, that can do outside dining, and, you know, perhaps the program needs some tweaks as we go along and we talk to restaurants and learn. So I wouldn't suggest, um, but it's the council's prerogative. Uh, to, you know, dive it really into the details about everything, uh, tonight, uh, in terms of the guidelines. Um, because we can, you know, uh, go, as we go along, adjust, but, um. Maybe that'll make more sense after Director Waremeister explains, explains a little bit.
Uh, thank you, good evening, council, um. I'll just go over some of the, maybe more, a little bit more in the weeds and details, and to clarify that the order. Um, is for outdoor activities, and so it's broader. Um, right now, the, the only thing that the health officer is allowing outdoors is outdoor dining. You know, retail restaurants can have curbside pickup. But if something changes, I'm not saying it will, but if something changes and something else can be done outdoors, we have the flexibility here. In this order to accommodate that. Um, the order, um, suspends certain use permit requirements and, um. Uh, it, it will streamline certain encouragement permit requirements. Uh, such that outdoor activities, we still, the city still will, uh, administratively review and. Require, uh, and stipulate certain requirements, but it can now be done administratively. And as the city manager mentioned, it actually can happen immediately with a follow-up of the administrative permit. The only exception to that would be anybody who needs a, um, outdoor activity agreement for the public right-of-way. So if they have a wide enough sidewalk where they can put some cafe tables out. For example, because there's more, um, I think potential, uh. Liability concerns for the city because it is in the public way. They need to get their agreement first, um, and there are certain insurance requirements associated with that. Only in the right-of-way, um, private property owners are, are, are good to go under the rules of the order. With property owner permission. Um, so some of the basic requirements that will be needed, um. You know, this is applicable to and in, in intended to support current tenants of shopping centers, so. You know, somebody can't just kind of come over and set up a barbecue and start. An outdoor restaurant in, in the parking lot, um. There is safety, location, accessibility requirements, so to make sure that if you are using parking spaces. That they're partitioned off in a safe manner so that there's no conflict between. Cars and folks who are sitting there, that, um, there's accessible, ADA accessibility requirements still in place. Just kind of quickly giving a quick overview, um. And then there are some operation requirements in terms of the hours of operation should be consistent with the hours of operation. Of the business as it current, as it ran before COVID. Um, you know, everything is maintained free of trash and debris, um, alcohol. If it is to be served, it's in accordance with the health order and ABC requirements. Um, no outdoor music or entertainment, et cetera. Uh, so that, that's a, that's a quick overview, we're, we're actually, um, still developing the application. We have it drafted, and we expect it to be up on the city page within the next day or two. Be happy to answer any questions.
Uh, Sue Varlos?
Does it only apply to restaurants, not like, uh? Uh, bars?
So right now, the health order specifically says that, um. If you are, you ha, you have to have sold food, um, so if you are only a bar. You cannot take advantage of this, and that's one of the things that I don't know if that will change in the next couple of weeks. That we wanted to make sure we were flexible enough that if it did change, we could accommodate those businesses as well.
Thank you.
I, I know we want to make it as easy as we possibly can, right, for these people to open up, and do you feel like this is doing that?
Uh, yes, I do.
Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem Beckmeyer?
Um, what, can you speak to what, um? City Manager Woodhouse was talking about at the beginning about how this is an emergency under the, you know, related to COVID. It's during, under the emergency orders, et cetera. I'm thinking about what happens if a restaurant kind of likes having the outdoor seating, and then the emergency's over. What, where do we go from there?
Yeah, so this, this order, um, and the provisions contained in it are only applicable during this emergency. And so once, once this is over. Uh, you would, if you're a business who use some parking spaces temporarily, you're back into your regular business space. You would need to come in and apply for a regular new use permit for the outdoor dining. I think one of the things that, um, City Manager Woodhouse mentioned is learning as we go. Not only will we learn if we need to improve things during this emergency. But, um, it's, it's been my opinion that, uh, except when there's something really unusual. Um, we should probably have easier rules to allow outdoor dining to take place in town. And so this will, the, the silver lining here is that this will actually help that, and we will learn. You know, what do we actually need to require, do we need the use permits? Um, so, so hopefully, this will, this will be, um, a learning experience that will help. Way beyond this emergency.
To inform our future practice.
Yes.
Okay. I will open for public comment if no one has any else. Now would be the time to raise your hand. And I don't see any hands raised, so I will close public comments and come back to council. I would entertain a motion.
I don't have anything written, but, um, I'll move.
Yeah, me either.
We allow, um, the emergency ordinance for outdoor dining, um, at restaurants. Until the end of the COVID virus, uh, closures.
I'll second.
Sorry.
Uh, actually, it's adopting the.
Yeah.
Motion is, is adopting the resolution. Just to clarify.
Okay, so, uh, Councilmember Varlos, can you, uh, revise your?
Yes, sorry, adopting the resolution. The emergency resolution pertaining to outdoor dining at restaurants during COVID.
May, maybe I should just read it for you?
I, uh, I have it, I have it here, I can.
We don't have it, so.
It's adopting, adopting a resolution of the City Council of the City of Pacifica ratifying Order Number Twenty Twenty dash zero two. Of the Director of Emergency Services related to operation of outdoor commercial activity in the public right-of-way. And on private property during period of local emergency due to COVID nineteen.
So moved.
I second.
Okay, uh, we have a motion by Councilmember Varlos and a second by Mayor Pro Tem Beckmeyer, and I have a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember O'Neill.
Yes.
Councilmember Beer.
Yes.
Councilmember Varelas.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Beckmeyer.
Yes.
Mayor Martin.
Yes.
And that item passes unanimously, five to zero.
Great.
Thank you very much, thank you, thank you for the quick work on this, and know it's going to mean a lot to a number of our restaurants.
And then I think we were adjourning for Deirdre had some people that we adjourned for.
Yeah, we're gonna adjourn in memory of those who, for whom we marched this weekend and for whom we continue to support. Um, just a few of those are George Floyd, Breonna Taylor, and Ahmaud Arbery, so thank you all for allowing that. And, um, have a good night.
Good night.
At eleven oh six PM, thank you.
And nice to see Mary tonight.
Yeah, thanks.